This is the 12th City Council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk president in the council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. We thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I call this meeting to order, and we will begin with our invocation. Could we all please stay together? Pastor Delbert Rogers from Champions Baptist Church comes to lead us in our invocation. If you would, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray together. Heavenly Father, we do thank you, Lord, for another day to live and to serve you. We thank for the occasion here. And as we come together tonight, we ask your blessing upon the proceeding. As the invocation indicates, we intend to invoke your blessing to help us tonight to live and to do according to your will. And bless each one that's here, bless our city officials, and help them to walk in your ways. We ask and pray in the name of Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Did you join me? I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I be seated? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Here.
Councilmember Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Askew.
Here.
We have a presentation for the employee of the month. We would like to ask Amanda Salazar, Stephanie Holkamp, Jason Miller, you guys going to present this presentation? Please come forward.
So excited. So this month, what I wrote was Darian has been an incredible addition to our summer camp program. We asked to get an EMT on site during camp hours to provide more adequate CPR and first aid practices, but he is way more than just an EMT while he is on our property. Darian is always walking around campus, interacting with the children, and helping counselors escort them around property. When helping a child in need, he is extremely friendly and always has a smile on his face. Everyone here loves him, and he loves when he comes out to help us because he is such a wonderful addition to our summer camp program, and we wish we can have him here every day. Darian's only responsibility while he's here at camp was to provide medical services when needed, but he always went much, he went higher and above his call of duty to serve as a role model, a positive influence for all the campers by making his presence known, and we wanted to show him this appreciation for having him here at our camp and wish we could have him there permanently. So, Darian White was our employee of the month this month.
Would you like to say a report? Okay. Appreciate you going above and beyond, being a second minor. At this time, we have a presentation by Antranet Forbes regarding our quarterly economic development report.
Antranet Forbes Economic Development Manager. I intend to give you the quarterly report for economic activity, which encompasses April through June of 2021. During the month of April, we had 53 new business registrations. In May, we had 48, and in June, we had 59, for a total of 160 new business registrations. You'll see from the chart how the subtypes broke out. Now, traditionally, we have the service and the retail, which usually takes up the large majority of the BTRs. However, professional services substantially increased during this quarter, and so it should be noted that professional services includes, it's very a wide campicing brush, so that's everything from insurance to realtors to management, et cetera. We also offered 119 cases of business assistance. That's where businesses either reached out to us or reached out to them directly to let them know different avenues of either technical or financial assistance that we can provide directly or we can refer them to. As always, I try to break out this report, business retention and business attraction. So, under the retention side, we partnered with Career Source Central Florida for their summer youth internship program. It also added the, in order to provide internship opportunities for St. Cloud students, preferably at St. Cloud businesses, as they are our future workforce and it's important that they stay vested in our city. We also added the financial literacy component, which included a partnership with Addition Financial, where they provided each one of the students $50 in their account to start out. So, to date, actually, I just got the updated numbers, and there was 23 St. Cloud students that participated in this program and three St. Cloud companies. Also, under business retention, we have our monthly newsletter that goes out. We have two newsletters. One is geared towards business retention, which is for our local businesses, and the other one is business attraction. So, the business retention newsletter, which is called The Connection, at this point, we have almost a little under 3,000 email addresses that it's sent out to with a 25% open rate. We also have continued our educational webinar series in partnership with the SBA. Last quarter, we did one on exportation, which offered the Enterprise Florida, SBA, the Central Florida International Trade Office. This quarter, we did one on Marketing 2.0, which was to help local businesses learn how to use social media to market their business. Each time, we try to use local businesses to help in that technical assistance training. And then, we also continued with our We've Open Safely campaign, which was a partnership with the county and city of Kissimmee to help disseminate information in real time, which resulted in our special alert messages. Those special alert messages included everything from COVID assistance to grant notifications as soon as they were coming out, regardless of whether or not it was St. Cloud offering the grants, but if they could help a St. Cloud business, we were trying to get that information out as quick as possible. We also received a fairly good amount of coverage on some of our programs in place. We were featured on Spectrum News in reference to the Growth Wheel Program. That's the technical assistance program that was part of the Phase 3 of the COVID Assistance Program, where we partnered with the UCF Business Incubator to provide six months of one-on-one business counseling with businesses to help them learn how to pivot during and post-COVID. And I can tell you, one of the businesses, they are now on their third possible expansion as a result from this program. We also were featured for the, for the, what do you call that, summer youth, excuse me, internship program. And of course, we continue with our quarterly virtual business walks, where we virtually meet one-on-one with businesses with a series of resource providers. So, each quarter, there are anywhere from 12 to 15 resource providers that are invited, and as their schedule permits, they do come. We have Career Source, SBA, the Chamber also comes, just a plethora of different providers that can provide either no cost or very low-cost assistance to businesses. So, on to our COVID assistance directly. I thought it was important for you all to know specifically how much assistance has been provided to St. Cloud businesses as it relates to COVID. So, for the St. Cloud COVID Economic Recovery and Stemless Plan, to date, we've reviewed 152 applications and have awarded about half, 77 grants have been awarded, which totals $329,675 dispersed, equating to, as of today, 440 jobs retained. We are now in the process of doing our post-award monitoring, which we said we would do six months to one year after they received the award to make sure that those grants, excuse me, those jobs stay retained. Our CDBG/CV Business Grant Program, which is from the Community Development Block Grant Funding, to date, we have received 31 applications, and we have awarded $159,031.72. That program offers up to, just for our audience, offers up to $20,000 of financial assistance to small businesses for rental assistance or mortgage assistance if it's a home-based business, utilities, internet, that sort of thing. Our Sidewalk Cafe Furniture Grant, we have received four applications to date, $10,000 has been rewarded, and three of those have, one application has been awarded, which is $10,000. There are three applications that are currently in the review process. And please let me know if I talk too fast, by the way. Under the Payment Protection Program, just so you know, this information is as of August of 2020. This is the most recent information that I can get from the SBA. 761 companies have received funding, when I say companies, St. Cloud companies have received funding, and they have reported, as they call it, reported, not retained, they have reported over 540 jobs. That equates to $38.5 million awarded to date. They recently opened, the SBA opened their Restaurant Revitalization Grant Program. 14 St. Cloud companies have received funding totaling $2,530,398. Osceola County recently provided their numbers of funding that they provided to St. Cloud businesses specifically, and that information is as of November of last year. 254 companies received funding totaling over $2.4 million, and they also provided $18,700, excuse me, $18,507.34 in commercial utility assistance. So, just to put into perspective, the last time I reviewed the county's Business Damage Assessment Report, I think it estimated about $42 million that businesses reported what they estimated in damage. That includes projected sales loss, and as you can see from those numbers, there's been more than $42,000 that has been put back into St. Cloud businesses through federal, state, or local funding. On the business attraction side, we've also gotten some pretty good press. So, once again, Spectrum News featured us as far as businesses that were starting up. I think I've mentioned in previous reports how we have 300 new BTRs, which equates to 300 new businesses since last year during a pandemic, and that was the feature report that was done on Spectrum News. It featured the Old Fashioned Cigar Store, which is located in our downtown. We also were featured in the Orlando Business Journal as well. We also attended the Retail Live Trade Show event, and that's where restaurants and retailers, national franchises, are looking for places to expand, and we go and pitch the city and why it's a good destination location, and since that point, we've been following up on those leads as well. We also started heavily advertising our Business Tax Grant Program that provides up to $100 to reimburse for both city and county fees associated with the BTR. That was to encourage more pop-up vendors to our monthly market. We also met with the St. Cloud Leads Group of the Puerto Rican Chamber of Commerce. Those are folks who either have St. Cloud businesses here or they have residences here, and we are trying to get them to relocate their business into St. Cloud. Okay. On business attraction, there are some other things that's been happening. So, the downtown monthly market is steadily growing in, in, what's the word I'm looking for, pedestrian foot traffic, also in the number of vendors that have now started to participate. So, we're getting very creative in how we can, everyone can be maneuvered. Our hotel feasibility study was recently completed, and now we're using that information to, again, market the city to potential hotel layers. The strategic site inventory with OUC, we've also started marketing the, these are both CRE programs, the Special Event Grant Program and the BTR Program I just mentioned, as well as doing new business outreach. That's where all, we run a report each month to find out which new businesses that were registered, and we reach out to them, either written correspondence or by calls, just to welcome them into St. Cloud. I thought it was also important to feature some of the new businesses that have come to St. Cloud. So, here are some of the pictures here. We have Hallie's Boutique, I can never say this right, Boutique Candles. They are a vendor that actually started out at the monthly market, as well as Insight Eye Care and Optical, St. Cloud Smoke Shop, Heavenly Cooling and Heating, Yomos, Baked Potato, and La Fontaine French Macaroons, which was also featured at our monthly market and now has a space in our downtown. And coming up, we are doing our next set of webinars, how to do business with the federal government. One of the things our research has shown is that when we speak to businesses, they want to know, how do I get a contract with government? For them, government means everything, and so it's important for them to realize there's many different avenues in order to get assistance, and the first thing they need to do is to be what's called a CBE, a Certified Business Enterprise, and in order to be a Certified Business Enterprise, you should at least know what opportunities are available once you become that. When I ran the last report of our 1,800-plus businesses, there are less than 20 businesses in St. Cloud that are registered as CBEs. That webinar is September the 5th, and we will keep the registrations open until the day before. It is always, all our webinars are recorded so that businesses can come back later on and retain that information. Our next business walk is scheduled for October the 8th. We've also partnered with the Hispanic Chamber of Metro Orlando to have a arts and cultural festival over at the lakefront on October the 30th. And our Economic Summit, which was postponed because of the pandemic, is tentatively scheduled for February 17th of 2022. That concludes my quarterly report, and I'm available for any questions.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Matheny.
I just wanted to clarify. You said September 5th. Did you mean 15?
I did mean September 15.
Okay. I got tongue-twisted. That was it.
Well, we certainly appreciate the outstanding work that you and your staff are doing, and thank you so much for making a significant difference in the economic development of our city. We're very grateful. Thank you, Antranet.
Thank you.
And one question. I don't know if my light's not working.
I see it now.
Okay. Are we, do we have any leads on the opportunity zone? It seems like we haven't really gotten anything to come in based on the opportunity zone designation in the city.
We've had inquiries, but I would not call it substantial, I would not call them substantial leads. We have people that request information. You know, one of the biggest things is where our biggest opportunity zone is, the 435 is primarily residential, and so trying to get developers to understand the potential, the potential that could be, that's a process that takes cultivation and time. Also, some of the tax benefits that's associated with it, the timeline has started to shorten, and so we're trying to find creative ways to market it, quite frankly.
Is there, do you think this current administration's going to extend it at all, or is it was a previous administration's kind of pet project and it's not going to?
That's a policy decision. It's above my pay grade, but I am available if it continues to market it.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, our city manager would like to make some clarifications, I believe.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull Item J on the consent agenda. It's 221-176R, adoption of the Waterfront/Lakefront Master Plan. It should have been under Council Action. They'll be put back on at a future date. Also, would like to pull Council Action Item Number 1 off the agenda.
Can you clarify what it's off?
Off. It's being pulled off of the agenda.
J.
J, yes. It's being pulled off of the agenda.
Okay. Item J is being pulled from the consent agenda.
Completely from the meeting.
Yeah, will not be heard tonight.
Will not be heard. And will not, should not be addressed.
Same for Item 1.
Council Action.
And the same clarification for Item 1. Council Action will not be heard tonight. And then, Council Action Item Number 4, 221-98R. I'm requesting that that be dealt with right now. Mrs. Eddy is in the back of the room. I think we can dispose of this very quickly.
If there are no objections, we'll deal with that item now.
I'll let Mrs. Eddy get up here, and I'll give a little background.
I thank you for listening to this and even taking into consideration that this is the second part of this request for reduction in her codes. The lady who was requesting them, I've never met them. They are out of the area, and they just asked me if I would come and represent them. The one lady who has been trying to handle this was, did not even know what was happening to this property for all these years, because the one person who was there did not forward any of the information to her. So, she is at a point where she's taken care of some of this, but this last amount is just way too high for her at this point to handle. So, if we could do something at least to get it down some, I certainly would appreciate it.
Mrs. Turgeon, could you give us a clarification?
Yes, I'd like to give you the background. This is in reference to code enforcement case 2017-296. Myra Salmy, Kathy Smart, Jane Palmer, and Mary Holloway are the owners. This is a code enforcement lien filed for the amount of $94,300 in accrued fines, plus $172.20 for administrative costs incurred by the city. The case totals $94,472, which is over the $50,000 threshold, so it has to come in front of the council. Ms. Smart is offering a settlement amount of $172.20 with a counteroffer from both the city manager and the magistrate for $9,602.20. And to do additional research, the house is not even on the property anymore, so it's an empty piece of property, and so the hard costs of the city are actually $172.20.
Right. We're looking at a vacant piece of land that, right now, we don't know what we're going to do with it, and at this point, she still has, what, $9,000 some hundred odd dollars that she just simply can't afford to pay.
Thank you. Ms. Matheny, Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So, I had the opportunity to sit with Ms. Eddy and discuss this. It's a very convoluted and complicated situation. The, so the property is inside of Tika Village, and there was some illnesses in the home, there was some other things. This is related to some landscaping issues that were needed to be addressed. There was also a separate code enforcement issue, which I didn't think was in our packet too clearly, but there was a separate code enforcement issue on the same property regarding the roof, and they already settled that, and that was, what, amount, like $9,000?
The original, that amount was a little over $11,000, and they settled, it was settled for $1,400.
$1,400. And so, I think part of the confusion for the property owner was that they thought they had already addressed it. You know, the code enforcement issues, and I understand it kind of both sides. I understand from a code enforcement perspective, if the code enforcement action happened separately, they would have separate case numbers and be mailed separately, but from a property owner out of state, I think it can be confusing, you know, because you think you've settled. So, this is in Tika Village, so you know, it's modular homes in there, and so when we met, I said, well, what does the property look like now? And then that's when they said it's gone, so the mobile home is gone. So, you know, I feel for the property owners, and for me, I think $9,000, even what the city manager and the magistrate has suggested that this be reduced to, it seems excessive to me for some landscaping. I saw the photos. I mean, it was, wasn't anything that bad. There were some vines growing inside the house. I mean, the roof was obviously more of the issue, and I would like to, I guess, make a recommendation that we settle it for $500. So, that gives us the administrative costs plus a little bit. I mean, I think the $9,000, $9,400, I think, plus $172 just is extremely punitive from my perspective.
Are you making that motion?
I'll make a motion.
First of all, I'm taking whether there be a second to that.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Matheny for reduction to, of this lien to $500, and second, council member Askew, do we have any other discussion?
And Mayor, if I could, if you mind, typically, we set a time for payment payable within 30 days. If that's okay.
30 days. Payable within 30 days.
$500 fine payable within 30 days.
Within 30 days.
Any other discussion?
It's fine.
Madam Clerk, could you please?
No, you do need to ask for public comment.
Oh, yes. So, will there be any one from the audience that would like to comment on this item? If not, Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, sir. That brings us back to our citizens forum. Is there anything else that we, you got everything?
No, sir. We're good. Thank you.
Brings us to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the residing officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and we will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, counsel. Teresa Melhaut, 2924 Cobry Circle, St. Cloud, Florida. I just wanted to make a comment on the city council budget workshop. I was here for that, on the Toho Water Authority's presentation, and I was here for that, and then I also watched the video twice so I could get my thoughts straight. During the presentation, three of the four council members all admitted that they had prior meetings with Toho Water Authority before the presentation. Deputy Mayor Trace was the only one who didn't say whether he was there or not. I had a prior, not together, separately, sunshine law, and I really don't care if you, I just wanted to say that sometimes that looks like the citizens are not privy to that information when you all meet like that with them, and I'm sure you're getting your ducks in the row, but anyway, we're not privy to that, and sometimes that makes us think that it's a done deal or things are going on in the background that we don't know. And during the workshop discussions, it was said on video that managing the control of our water would be the same end result as selling our water. It was stated right there on the video, and I encourage all the citizens of St. Cloud to please watch that video. But the end result, so it would never come back to us, that's what was said. It would be a done deal, and that is on the video. It was also revealed during the workshop, if St. Cloud so controlled of our water, it would require it being put on a ballot for the citizens to vote for, and we require two-thirds vote for approval versus if it is managed, only three council members, and this was the words used at that meeting, would needed to be present, would needed to be persuaded versus 30,000-plus citizens or residents. If it is managed versus selling, that's playing semantics with us, the citizens. If the end result is the same, it doesn't matter to us. So, I just think if you're playing semantics by doing this managing so three of you, a majority, could vote on it and it happened versus have, being on the ballot, the citizens voting, it's playing semantics with our rights. I felt the need to speak about this since Toho's meeting with you guys on this back Sometimes citizens feel like things are already done deal before the council, they come to the council, and citizens aren't allowed to speak on the first vote on things. That was taken away from us. We used to be able to vote, I mean, speak. So, I'm just asking for the council to not take my voice away. My voice is my vote, so don't take it away. So, if this council- So if this council really wants to do this, put it on the ballot, let the citizens vote. It is our right. It is the right thing to do. And that is all I really have to say about this for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had two requests for people to speak to consent. Item J that's been pulled, so that that will not be recognized at this time, it'll be back on the record in the near future. Would anyone else like to speak during the citizens forum? If not, we'll move to our next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. The first thing I would ask is, do council have any items on the consent agenda that you're wanting to, to address? Councilmember Matheny?
I'd like to pull D as in dog.
Thank you.
For discussion as well as Q. Q-tip. I don't know what else you say for Q.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Trace?
Item X and item A G.
Item X.
And Alpha Golf.
And item A G.
X.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll go back to item D. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Okay, so I don't know about the rest of council, but I get a lot of citizens contacting me about the marina and specifically the wait time to get a boat slip in the marina. And also the fact that it seems that people are parking their boats at the marina and just using it as cheap storage because our marina fees are less than other businesses if you were going to store your boat. And so I fully support the rate increase that, that we're doing. Just, just for the citizens to know, so right now, the proposed city rate is sixty-seven dollars a month. Rockers lockers would be between a hundred and forty and a hundred and forty-five dollars a month. Extra space storage, extra space storage is a hundred and forty-two dollars a month. Personal mini storage is a hundred and twenty-six to a hundred and fifty dollars a month. So you could see we're the cheapest option. And for me, I feel like the marina is a beautiful asset to our community and it is also, you know, a taxpayer benefit. So I would like to make some changes to the proposed documentation. First of all, something I just learned is that someone has two slips in our marina. A single, a single person has two slips, which is against our code. That was a mistake that the city allowed someone to have two slips. And I would just like to see the other council's feelings about, you know, just, I guess, notifying them via letter, giving them sixty or ninety days and saying, you know, here's the code and the ordinance, this wasn't allowable, it was a mistake on the city's part and, you know, refund the balance of their, their fee if, if they have one. I would like to see that we do that. I have a few statistics I wanted to tell you. So there's a hundred and forty-three boat slips. Eighty-six of them are, I'm not going to call them residents because the way our ordinance is written, it's taxpayers. So if you're a taxpayer within the city limits, then you qualify, you know, as the, a resident status. So there's eighty-six that are taxpayers in the city of St. Cloud. There's forty-seven that are non-taxpayers. Nineteen of those forty-sevens are even outside of Osceola County. So thirty-three percent of the boat slips right now are not being able to be enjoyed by St. Cloud residents. Right now, the waitlist is twenty-three people that live in the city of St. Cloud that are waiting for slips. And I know sometimes these people are on the list year, you know, two years. People don't let the slips go. You know, once you get them, they, they keep them because our rent is so cheap. So I would like to make it where the marina is city only. I would like to make that revision to it. Right now, the way our ordinance is written, or codes or whatever they are, the way that it's written, not in the lease document, it says that city taxpayers have the first right of, you know, we, they get, they get the spaces first. But I think right now, like we're, we all know that we have all these growing pains, the city, you know, we have all this successes and I think the marina is a very successful benefit to the city. And I don't think when, when they first built the marina years ago, I think there was concern like of having all these empty slips. I don't think we have that worry anymore. So I would like to see that this is a city taxpayer benefit that gets to have the slips within the marina. And the other thing I would say is anybody that has a current lease, we would just let them stay until, you know, give them a fair amount of time. I mean, I'm even okay with like October of next year, so they have over a year and plus it kind of coincides with our fiscal year. But I wanted to see how the other council members felt about changing this amenity to be city taxpayer only.
Councilmember Trace?
Now, is that city taxpayer or city resident?
It's the way that the residency is, is determined is by if you pay taxes within the city limits, correct?
Yeah, the, the language in the current code essentially is ad valorem taxpayer. So if the boat owner pays taxes to the city, property taxes to the city, they're eligible to, they are, they're eligible for the city occupancy.
The other, the other thing that we put in the lease that I asked for, because I didn't want anybody, everybody knows someone who lives in the city, right? So I didn't want them to be like, hey, Mr. Trace, you don't have a boat, will you get me a lease and then I could put my boat in there? So the lease is tied to the registration of the boat. So that's in the lease, if you read it, like whoever's leasing it is the person who owns the boat. So then there's some, you know, fact checking there, if you will, if they're actually city, inside the city or not, so.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. I, I was going down the same path with staff of like, this is cheaper than storing your boat somewhere. And I get people asking me all the time of why there's no availability at the, at the marina. So I'm, I'm fine with, I think, all of that, but you're going to have to make a specific motion
Sure.
on, on all those instances. Or if you wanted just us to give staff direction and then you can come back in the next meeting.
No, no, I'll make a motion.
Couple meetings.
Um, the city attorney, because he's always on top of the ball, has already got a document drafted that takes out all of the language about non-city taxpayers. So there's already a document in there and about the fee structure and things like that, but. And, and I know in the future, you know, there's a plan that we're going to have more slips in the marina. And I feel like at that time, it could be revisited, but for right now, we have, you know, a hundred and forty-three boat slips and thirty-three percent of them are, are taken up by non-city taxpayers.
I honestly thought the number would be worse than thirty-three percent. So I, I'm, I'm fine though with a certain percentage of being non-resident taxpayers.
We talked about that, but I think it gets too complicated.
Yeah.
And then people won't give up their lease and then, you know. So can I make a motion to vote on this separately, Mayor?
You sure can.
So I'll make a motion for item number D in the consent agenda to make the revision that this is for, the leases are for St. Cloud residents, St. Cloud taxpayers only. And that we will notify the, the leaseholder that has two slips, that they are only allowed to have one and cite the, the land development code or the ordinances that says they're only allowed to have one slip and give them ninety days to vacate the slip. And then the people that have current leases that are not inside the city, their lease would terminate October first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second it. We have a motion as stated by Councilmember Matheny, we have a second, my councilmember Askew. Are, is there any other clarification we need on that?
No, I just want to make sure that we're, we're going to keep the same qualification, meaning ad valorem taxpayer, because we keep saying the city resident.
Well, yes, the ad valorem tax, whatever, however it's written now.
We don't want to change that, that's fine.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Hey, good evening. Rafael de Jesus, forty-eight seventy-six, Gran Vista Lane, St. Cloud, Florida. I just, I agree with the councilwoman about, pretty much the whole presentation. However, I have an issue with telling people that have been there for five, six years till they got a year left and they have to find another place to go in the marina. But these are people that were there when there was empty slips. And now we're going to tell them that you have to go. So I think we, you do, you weigh with attrition only, those people as they get out, they don't get released, you, you, you will get the same effect and you don't throw anybody out. I would just recommend that would be an easier way to go about reducing that amount of people that are out of the city in the marina.
Thank you for your comment, sir.
Thank, oh, and another thing also, I propose quarterly somebody to go and make sure the registration and insurance are current in every slip. And I guarantee you probably get rid of about twenty, thirty slips that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Do we have any further discussion?
Just one comment, Mayor. The current lease, every birth, lessee signs a lease that provides that the city can terminate that lease upon thirty days' notice. So actually giving them a year or as Ms. Matheny has said, giving the one individual ninety days is more than the, than the agreement that they signed when they occupied the space. So you're giving them more time than they're entitled to.
Any other discussion?
Anyone want to talk to the, the natural attrition verse fourteen months or thirteen months of?
Well, I'm, I guess I'm okay with that, that concept to just let it, let them run out and issue, no longer issue any other ones. But I think we need to check all of the, you know, check the insurance, the registration and all that on all of the, the current slipholders because I'm sure we've got some people that aren't following what they're supposed to do. And I also talked to Ms. Holcamp about, you know, how do we, how do we make sure that it looks nice down there? Because you go down to the marina and you see people with, you know, their boats are in bad shape or some covering is ripped or their flagpole is broke or their flags are all tattered. And do we need to, do we need to add something to code enforcement to allow code enforcement to be able to go in there and, you know, make sure that looks? I mean, that is kind of like the view shed of crabby bills and like going down there to the marina. And so she's assured me that the harbor master is on top of, of all of that, so.
Seems to me like that's another issue that needs to go to the, to staff to, for them to address and work on.
Well, it is, but I, you know, I did have the conversation, like, let's make sure it looks nice down there and.
Mr. Mazares?
And I was just going to point out, there, there is ample language in the current birth leases to, to enforce those provisions. You just, it's a matter of staff just having the resources and basically enough direction from the council to, to address the issues when they come up. So you already have the mechanism in place. And on the, on the attrition issue, that's a little complicated because these leases essentially continue as long as the individual pays them. So I think one of the issues you ran into is that there hasn't been a lot of attrition because of the, you know, the, the value of the lease for the individual boat owner. So I don't know if you're going to accomplish the same purpose if you rely simply on a program of attrition.
Any further questions or clarification?
I'm, I'm flexible on the attrition if you guys want me to amend my.
And we can revisit it in the year.
We can revisit it.
Yeah.
That would at least take off because I know, I, I don't have the email up in front of me, but I know of the twenty-three taxpayers that are on the waitlist, there's sixty, there's like sixty, sorry, I've got notes jotted everywhere, sixty-three that are on the waitlist. So, you know, that cuts the waitlist down. And then I was asking, really, how are you, you know, like, they were telling me there's sixty-three on the waitlist. And I said, well, how many are city, how many are non-city? And then I was told they didn't know. And then I said, well, then how are you giving them to the city residents first if you don't know who's city and who's not, if you have a list? So I mean, I think it would probably streamline the process to just take no further, no further leases to non-ad valorem tax.
I don't have a boat, but is the registration the same month every year or is it your birth month or?
It's whenever they sign the lease is whenever they, because I asked that same question to Ms. Holcamp. I said, like, if somebody got a lease today, do you have them batched together to make it easier for staff, you know? And it was just, no, it's whatever day they sign the lease, which I think we probably ought to do it quarterly or something so that a hundred and forty-three is probably a lot for one staff person to renew on a date certain, but maybe batch it like three, two, but that's all staff can figure that out.
I meant on the insurance, to check insurance and registration.
You mean what the state requirement says to when you register, re-register your boat? I, I don't know.
Okay, because I know certain vehicles, it's December third or sad, someone with a boat, yeah.
So birthday?
Birthday, okay. Is it birthday? All right. Okay, so then it's hard to manage that.
Yeah.
So, okay. Ed, if you want to.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to be no new non-ad valorem taxpayers.
Okay.
And we took the language out of there, as you saw that you can't sublet your slips anymore, which I think will help too.
I'll still second. What we're voting on?
If I could have one final comment?
Yes, Mr. Mazares.
The current lease agreement has an automatic renewal option for the, for the lessee in it. So again, that's basically at the lessee's option, a perpetual lease agreement. So if you are interested in basically having the opportunity to adjust this in a year, you may want to remove that automatic lease renewal option. So then this, when the lease is up, the individuals would have to come back to the, at least the staff at that point would have an opportunity to gauge what's going on and make a determination about whether they need further direction from the council on this issue.
I'm fine with that too. I'll remove the automatic renewal.
I'll second for a third time. Any other discussion from council? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Item J has been pulled. Brings us to item X. Mr. Trace?
Q.
Q.
Um, so Q. I had issues with the, the application for fill of the site because they basically are wiping out all of the trees. And there was no tree preservation plan, there was no, there was nothing in there, just a bunch of X's on all the trees. And I know some of them are not in the best of condition, but it's just another site plan where we're wiping all the trees out. So I would like to postpone this to the next meeting and have them come back with a plan regarding, and, and to detail what you're doing, like you're wiping out, you know, this, there was no detail on the survey that said what the trees were, you know, are they camphor trees, are they half burned down trees, like what are they? Like it was just a bunch of X's all over the, the tree survey.
Mr. Mazares, do you have, are you wanting to comment?
No, I'm sorry, sir.
So are we, are you at, making a motion to just be pulled?
Yeah, I would like to continue it, but I think.
Your motion to continue it to the next meeting or something?
I think the applicant was here, they want to discuss that.
Good evening, Sean Hindle, Hanson Walter Associates, eight Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida. If you want to pull it, that's fine. All the information has been submitted to the city. There is a tree preservation plan. The large hammock that is just to the north of the proposed building and adjacent to Hickory Tree Road, the entire hammock, except, with the exception of a couple of trees from a roadway, ours being preserved. We're preserving trees on the site. This was just in early works to allow them to, to start some of the earthwork for the, the GMP that we have out on the site for the, for the buildings. So there is a plan on, that staff has and it was submitted with the application.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hindle, when was that submitted to staff?
April of this year.
Thank you.
And it's been through review and resubmitted, I believe, in June or July of this year.
Thank you.
Matheny?
Do I make a motion to continue it, Mr. Mazzares?
Yes.
To, what's the next meeting date?
September ninth.
September ninth? I'll make a motion to continue this item to September ninth to have opportunity to review the tree preservation plan. And I hope it has all the details of the size of the trees, what the trees are, what the plan is. That wasn't not in our packet.
Point of order? Mayor, point of order?
Yes.
I need to check the date on that, make sure it's September ninth. It's September ninth, yes. Okay, thank you.
September ninth is correct. Thank you. Do you make any further clarification?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion for continuation to September ninth of item Q. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Matheny, a second by Trace. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Was that all of your items?
Yes.
Brings us to item X, is that correct? Councilmember Trace?
In, in going through the scope, I just wanted to make sure that we were going through this and finding opportunities for us to apply for stormwater grants if we are finding issues with, you know, areas in the city. I just want to make sure that that was the purpose of this. I know we're, we're trying to figure out the, the financing of it and the funding of it. I just want to make sure that we're, we're looking out for grant opportunities as well.
Okay.
Okay. But we can vote on it with the whole slate, I just had a question on it.
Alright. And I believe the next item is AG.
AG, I just want to point out, I know there's a lot of conversation about SROs versus guardians, so for all of the schools within the city, all the public schools in the city, we are having SROs as part of city, city staff, police officers in these schools.
That is correct.
Perfect.
Any other comment?
Nope.
Councilmember Trace, did I get all your items?
Yes, sir.
Would any one of the audience like to speak to any items on the consent agenda? If not, could I have a motion for adoption of consent agenda minus the items that we have already voted on, D.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Trace, second from Councilmember Matheny.
Askew.
I'm sorry.
Askew.
Madam Clerk. Sorry about that, Dave.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
If I am correct, we're at public hearings. Item number one and two. Madam Clerk, please, yes. Two separate items, thank you. Item number one.
Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash ten, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of the St. Cloud, city of St. Cloud approximately five point one twenty-three acres identified as OUC St. Cloud Operations and Maintenance Facility located south and west of the intersection of US Highway one ninety-two and Hickory Tree Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of chapter one seventy-one point zero four four Florida statutes.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Jesse Anderson, senior planner. Our first case tonight is for OUC St. Cloud Maintenance and Operations Facility. It is a voluntary annexation. It's for approximately five point one two three acres of land located south and west of the intersection of US Highway one ninety-two and Hickory Tree Road. It is contiguous and reasonably compact, and there has been a petition signed by all property owners. Moreover, the property in question does abut the city limits on the southern property boundary. The existing future land use is industrial in the county, and the existing zoning is industrial general county as well as agricultural development and conservation county. This is consistent with the strategic plan goals of growth management and economic development. DRC and staff, as well as the planning commission, recommend approval of this ordinance. As such, City Council has requested to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash ten. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? I believe Michael, do we have the, the applicant?
Yes, I believe the applicant is here.
Sean?
Good evening, Sean Hindle, Hanson Walter Associates, eight Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, representing OUC, available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Michael Prasad.
Good evening. Michael Prasad, seventeen thirty-six, Juniper Circle. I have some properties on the other side of Tileston, the city sent me this paper. And I'm just wondering, would their presence limit and/or change what I can do to that property presently?
Do you have any other question?
And will sewer be coming across the street on Tileston? Would that be something that they are required to do?
Do you have any other question?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Hindle, could you speak to that?
Certainly. As far as his individual rights on his property, there's no impact of this property to his zoning or land use or his personal property rights. As far as utilities, we are stubbing some utilities out to Tileston. I'm not sure that we could get the gravity sewer there from one ninety-two, but I think we're bringing a reuse line across the site instead of around one ninety-two and up, as well as a water main.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Not, we'll have discussion or motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you, Mayor. Is it possible to get Mr. Prasad in contact with our planning department or someone can give him contact information to?
Are we, are sure, is his property in the city or not?
I don't know, but could somebody stick their hand up and go talk to him and give him information? That would be great.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'll just reiterate my comments from the first time this came is that, you know, I hope that OUC comes with a really beautiful campus and, and doesn't, you know, I gave my spiel last time about businesses that come into St. Cloud versus the same business that opens up, you know, up by Lake Nono, we don't get the same quality. Hopefully, we're going to have a beautiful campus and beautiful finishes and landscaping and, and all that nine yards.
I think we're all in agreement with that nine yards. Make it ten.
Was that a motion?
Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second from Mr. Councilmember Askew?
Oh, I was asking if that was a motion. That's fine, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, I'm sorry. Got a motion by Trace, Councilmember Trace, and you, a second by Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
And Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Brings us to item number two.
Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash eleven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of public institutional to approximately twenty-four point sixty-five acres identified as OUC St. Cloud Maintenance and Operations Facility generally located south and west of the intersection of US Highway one ninety-two and Hickory Tree Road, providing for amending the official, official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability, copies on file and effective date.
Jesse Anderson, senior planner. Again, this is a secondary case for OUC St. Cloud Maintenance and Operations Facility. It is the concurrent comprehensive plan amendment for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. Again, it is located south and west of the intersection of US Highway one ninety-two and Hickory Tree Road, and this is for approximately twenty-four point six-five acres of land, which is inclusive of the annexation that we just heard about in the last case. The background for this is that the future land use is industrial for the county, industrial for the city, and also commercial inside of the city. The proposed future land use is public institutional, and the development is compatible with the general development pattern in the area, as well as causing no adverse impacts on city facilities. This map denotes the future land use for the surrounding properties as well as the properties in question. And it is consistent, again, with the growth management goal, with the strategic plan goals of growth management and economic development. DRC and staff, as well as the planning commission, again, recommend approval of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven, and we request that council does approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven. I'm available for any questions, as well as the applicant.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak to this item? Mr. Hindle?
Good evening, Sean Hindle, Hanson Walter Associates, available to answer any questions you may have. And from your last question, yes, it's going to be amazing. It's class, class A office space.
Oh, great.
All the, all the service of all vehicles are internal. Storage of a lot of the equipment is internal. So it's, it's going to be a very, very, very nice development. And the, the landscape architect that's been working directly with my staff has been just doing an amazing job. So when it's approved by OUC for the final product, we will bring a presentation to you to see that. Okay? So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Would any one of the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. I make a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Brings us to items three, four, five. And I believe you need to break those together.
Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately thirteen point fifty-seven acres identified as Center Lake Ranch Park Parcel located east of Twelve Oaks Road and south of Hanson Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of chap, chapters one seventy-one point one four four Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of mixed use to approximately thirteen point fifty-seven acres identified as Center Lake Ranch Park Parcel located east of Twelve Oaks Road and south of Hanson Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability, copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of mixed, mixed use compatible with a mixed use future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash fourteen for approximately thirteen point five seven acres identified as Center Lake Ranch Park Parcel located east of Twelve Oaks Road and south of Hanson Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the planning commission, recommendation and proof of publication, severability and effective date.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Jesse Anderson, senior planner. For our first of the three cases related to Center Lake Ranch Park Parcel, we have the voluntary annexation. It's for thirteen point five seven acres of land. And again, it is a voluntary annexation. The background is that it is contiguous and reasonably compact. It does abut the city limits on the northern, southern and western property boundaries. The existing future land use is low density residential. The existing zoning is AC agricultural development and conservation. It is compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. It's consistent with the growth management strategic plan goal. Staff and DRC, as well as the planning commission, do recommend approval of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen and recommend that council, or request that council does approve this ordinance, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, according to the sixteen findings of the Land Development Code. I'm available for any questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Would the applicant like to speak at this time?
Oh, I should actually keep going, sorry, I forgot, there's two more cases.
Yes, won't you go ahead and cover those?
I apologize for that.
I'm sorry.
Alright, so for our second one, we have the Center Lake Ranch Park Parcel Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, again, for thirteen point five seven acres of land. In this map, you can see the future land use designations for the parcel in question as well as the surrounding parcels. The future land use is low density residential in the county, and the proposed future land use is mixed use in the city. It's compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. Again, it is, it's consistent with the strategic plan goal of growth management. And DRC staff and the planning commission do recommend approval of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen and request that the city council does so as well. Our third case is the Center Lake Ranch Park Parcel Zoning Map Amendment. In this case, we have a map for you that denotes the surrounding area that is zoned as mixed use, as well as showing that currently that the zoning district for the parcel in question is agricultural conservation and development. As I mentioned, that existing zoning is agricultural development and conservation. The proposed zoning is mixed use, and the future land use is low density residential with a proposed future land use of mixed use in the city. It is compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. Again, it is consistent with the growth management strategic plan goal. And once again, staff, DRC and the planning commission do recommend approval of this ordinance and request that City Council approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fifteen. I'm available for any questions this time, and I believe the applicant is here.
Now we will hear from the applicant. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Joe Thacker, seventeen, South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. I am here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. If you remember at the last meeting, there was a question about whether the applicant was willing to place a restriction on the property to make sure that it would always be used for a fire station or a park. That language was presented to staff. I don't know if you all were provided the language or not. Maybe? May I do so?
Sure.
Okay. The annexed property may be used only for park space and a fire station, as may be reflected from time to time on an approved conceptual master plan slash concept plan for Center Lake Ranch and for uses that are incidental to such park and fire station or incidental to the overall development of the Center Lake Ranch project, such as, but without limitation, road wide of way, wet and dry utilities and related equipment, stormwater retention, parking trails, boardwalks, docks, pavilions, restrooms, signage, hardscaping, lighting and/or landscaping. For the avoidance of doubt, no residential or commercial structures may be built on the annexed property.
That's pretty well, pretty thorough.
And I am here to answer any questions that you may have or to address any concerns by the public. Just also would ask maybe that the concept plan that's later on in your agenda be considered at this time as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sandy Seaman?
Good evening, Sandy Simone, fifty-four, sixty-five, Hanson Road, St. Cloud, Florida. Thank you very much for requesting that the concept map put in the fire station. All that's in the map, so that takes one of my questions away. Thank you. So my neighbor has a question about the gopher tortoise. We live on Hanson Road, right in the, we're like a little island in the middle of Center Lake. And our question is this, I gave you guys these little packets. So in two thousand nine, the DRI for Center Lake Ranch showed a hundred and thirty-one boroughs, which equals to sixty-five-ish tortoises. Her question is, we don't know the mating habits or migration habits of the tortoises in these states. So her question is, do they need to do any studies to see if any of the tortoises have gone over to the fire station park area? So that's her question. The second question we had was the entrance to the passive park. We live on Hanson Road, which is on the north side of the passive park. We want to know where the entrance is going to be into the passive park. And then I guess my last question is- And then I guess my last question is concerning the park. We know that the City of St. Cloud adopted the Narcoussi overlay, and we're just wanting to ensure that whatever the Narcoussi overlay says about the parks and fire station is included. So I've given you guys all those little paperwork that I had. And again, thank you very much for including the concept map in the packet. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Simone. Joe, would you like to speak to that?
So before any development can happen, they will look and see if there's mitigation that has to be done on the gopher tortoises before development would continue, just as they would on any development in the normal course. There, the question on the park, as far as where... The concept plan for the park isn't finished yet, so I can't answer that tonight. That will be approved by the city. It will come forward to... And I know that staff, even as of today, gave some suggestions about what they'd like to see in that park concept plan. So that is not developed yet and will come at a later time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to items three, four, or five? Yes, ma'am. Please sit forward. State your name and address of the record.
Hi, my name is Lisa Klepper. I live at 908 Michigan, St. Cloud, Florida. I just have a couple of questions. I noticed we're talking about changing some conservation. Is it going to remain conservation area when it's annexed? Or is that becoming something else? And if so, how many acres or how much of this conservation area are we just mitigating and letting go bye-bye? You know, we just seem to keep doing that over and over again, so I just want to know what that is. Also, just curious, because it's being annexed in, is there a difference in low density for county versus low density for city? Is there a certain number of homes that it's more homes if it's in the city? Is that why everybody wants to come in, or is it the same?
It's less.
It's actually less.
Okay, good. Perfect. Thank you.
Joe?
Yes, so it's not conservation right now. It's low-density residential land use. It may have an AC zoning, but they would be allowed to have a low-density residential zoning if they applied for it. So they could put more homes on it with it staying in the county than they could if it came into the city. And with the restriction that we've placed, that we'll be placing on the property, there will be no homes or commercial structures on there. So it's actually preserving rather than developing the property, except for for a park and fire station.
And there was a question about the Narcoussi overlay as well before? If it would adhere to the Narcoussi overlay? I don't know if there was any detail in there about fire stations in...
I don't think there are any details about fire stations, but the city would actually be the one approving the plan for the fire station. Y'all will be building it. So if you all want to be subject to the Narcoussi overlay, then we're all for it.
Would anyone else like to speak to items three, four, or five that hasn't spoken? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motions by council, beginning with item number three. Mr. Manzares, I see your lines.
Thank you, Mayor. So just for purposes of making sure we get this in the right place, your code allows for a restriction to be placed on a rezoning. So the language that Ms. Thacker read to you regarding the restrictive use of the property would be appropriately incorporated into this motion. So if you make the motion incorporating that language, that would put it in the zoning ordinance, which would keep it in perpetuity.
And that's on item five?
That's 2021-15, yes.
Okay.
Do we have any discussion questions from council? What is your pleasure regarding item number three, 2021-13?
I would do a motion to approve.
I have a motion for council member Askew. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by council member Trace. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Brings us to item number four, ordinance number 2021-14. Do we have any discussion questions? Could I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from council member Askew, second from the mayor. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And then that brings us to item number five, item number 2021-15, which incorporates the motion item that Mr. Manzares...
Restrictive, the restrictive language read by Mrs. Thacker.
Restrictive language. Thank you. Do we have discussion in our motion by council?
Motion to approve with the restricted language.
Have a motion for council member Askew?
Second.
Second from council member Trace. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And then did you want to go to council action three? That's the master plan.
I can jump to that. If I can find my paper here. Lost my paper. There it is. Put it over. Let's go to council action, item number three. Madam Clerk, will you read that?
Discussion and possible action regarding approval for the conceptual master plan, concept plan amendment for a mixed-use property containing approximately 2,303.92 acres of land known as Center Lake Ranch.
Jesse Anderson, senior planner. This case is for Center Lake Ranch mixed-use conceptual master plan concept plan. It is an amendment to the originally approved plan. It is located east of Narcoussi Road, north of Nova Road, and south of Jones Road. The proposed development at full buildout will consist of the following land uses: 3,140 single-family residential units, 800 attached multifamily dwelling units, 170,000 square feet of commercial, 70,000 square feet of office, and 44.3 acres of civic space, public space, and park space. The various place types that are going to be included are neighborhood center, a civic area, neighborhood type one, neighborhood type two, and an open space district. This map in front of you displays the place types associated with this mixed-use comprehensive plan. And the development program buildout for the full scenario is placed in this image before you. Overall, the development's going to follow a phasing, which is demonstrated in the phases before you now, with District One being the first phases, District Two following that, then District Three and District Four. Here is the road network plan, which demonstrates the mobility of the area as well as the connectivity. And here is the multi-use trail and network plan that shows the multi-use nature and pedestrian-friendly, as well as bicycle-friendly avenues that are present in this plan. It is consistent with the growth management, infrastructure, and economic development strategic plan goals. And DRC and staff recommend approval of the Center Lake Ranch conceptual master plan concept plan amendment and request that council do the same. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak to this?
What I'd like, Joe Thacker. What I'd like to point out is the reason we had to bring a concept plan amendment forward is because of the property we just annexed. And so that is shown on there. What's happening to where the park used to be is it becomes residential. However, no more units are being requested. It will just be spread out a little bit more. So the residential property that where the park was is the same number of units. So the only real amendment is to bring in the park property into the concept plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll see comment from the public. Annette Fender, are you speaking to this item?
I signed up for...
I pulled up the wrong item.
Okay. But may I make a comment? I'm close to it.
Not from there, you can't. You have to come up to the mic, state your name. Come up to the mic, state your name, and... Are you speaking to this item here?
I am, sir. Yes, please. My name is Annette Fender. I live at 1775 Drew Liner Road, St. Cloud, Florida. I've lived there for 27 years. And the reason I'm... I have a question about this Center Lake Ranch, this big item, is because I have not received anything in the mail notification by the city. I live on Drew Liner Road, right off of Nova Road, about this huge Center Lake item going to happen. And I don't know if it's your policy to notify the landowners that we're having something like this being discussed by the city, by the committee. And so, because there's a lot of neighbors that don't know anything about it either. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thacker? We addressed this issue earlier. Don't clarify that.
So this is dealt in the same way as all other notifications are. As far as I... And I don't know on this one what kind of notification was sent out by staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
So for the notification process, it actually occurs through the annexation comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments, which is required by state statute to be for 300 feet for the surrounding properties. As you can note in the actual annexation amendment, or this happens to be the zoning map amendment, the 300-foot radius that surrounds this property is largely encompassed by the currently present Center Lake Ranch property. The mixed-use plan that was in front of you as well is not something that we actually advertise for because it is on the consent item list.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? We'll have discussion in our motion by council? Council member Trace?
So I just want to point out, because we had, I think, when this came through two years ago or so, there was a lot of discussion about the reclaimed water tank, the buffers and the walls and everything. All that is incorporated into this latest plan. I did check at all the stipulations that were put on that approval before, moving the water facility away from Star Line, putting the walls and buffers and berms and everything. And then this isn't adding any extra units or density to this project or changing any of the other development regulations there. So with that, and with the fact that it's a park and a fire station benefiting the residents, I'll make a motion to approve item three, the Center Lake Ranch conceptual master plan.
We have a motion from council member Trace. Do I have a second?
I'll second it with a quick note, Mayor, if it's okay.
You can go right ahead.
I appreciate the folks from Center Lake Ranch actually coming to the City of St. Cloud. They could have easily built this probably in the county. So if you're looking at some of those numbers, like 3,000 homes, that could have been double if it went through the county. So they've been working with us closely, and it seems like their plan is a good plan, and I would support that.
We have a motion by council member Trace, a second by council member Askew. Madam Clerk, recall the rule.
Councilmember Matheny?
No.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries three one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now that brings us back to item six. Is that correct? Could you please read that under public hearings?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-35, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, rezoning 22.97 acres identified as 1750 and 1770 Drew Liner Road from agriculture to R-1B, single-family residential, compatible with a low-density residential. Future land use designation located north and west of Nova Road and west of Ranch Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, separability, and effective date.
Good evening, council members. I'm Scott McGrath with the Planning and Community Development Office. This hearing is for ordinance 2135, amendments to the official zoning map for the properties of 71, 70, I'm sorry, 1750 and 1770 Drew Liner Road. The applicant has also applied for a PSP, a preliminary site plan, which will not be heard tonight. It will be heard on September 9th. The applicant is requesting a change in the zoning from Ag to R1B. This is consistent with the low-density residential underlying land use. Here you can see the zoning current. This amendment helps to achieve the goals of the strategic plan in expanding a vibrant, progressive, and diverse community through sustainable planning for generations. The public was notified in accordance with state statutes. One person has responded via letter. That letter's available if you'd like to have a copy. Staff and the Planning Council have recommended approval of ordinance 21-35. City council action is requested. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for your comment before we do. Is the applicant here? Would he like to speak to this item?
I believe so.
Good evening. Shawn Hendel, Hanson Walter Associates, 8 Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We'll get comment from the public. Annette Fender, I'm sorry I pulled you up earlier. You are available now. This is the correct item.
Good evening. My name's Annette Fender. I live at 1775 Drew Liner Road. I have 12 and a half acres. I also have 1785 Drew Liner Road, connected right next door. And I'm not within 300 feet because we're agriculture, and the properties around me are agriculture. So to be 300 feet, that's why I didn't receive a notification on this item, according to your regulation, which I think should be addressed for people who live in the country, in the City of St. Cloud, and have that problem like I do. I am objecting to the property, not so much of the way it's laid out. If you could see on the map that these numbers are 1750, 1770, well, they're not even in conjunction with the property on the Drew Liner Road. We're a dirt road, and then we have kind of a kitty corner, another dirt road. And my issue is that the property there that is looking to be built on, it'd be nice if they were larger lots. I have not a large home. I have an original home built from 1924. And, but, you know, we have nice homes, and then we have all these homes that are coming in that are tightly packed together. And also, the dirt road on my road that goes back to these people, I'm not sure how they're going to address this kitty corner part if they're going to bring it in off the new subdivision that has 900 homes on it. And that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hendel?
Shawn Hendel. The subdivision itself is accessing through the adjacent development. It's not accessing off of Drew Liner Road. Staff had asked us during the process to provide for emergency access off of Drew Liner. So we will have a chain and a lockbox that prevents anyone from going down Drew Liner. And all the access will be from two connection points. Westerly Way, which is the northern access is North-South Road that connects into our property. And then there's an East-West Road that's to the west of us. That will be the access to the south part. So there won't be any signage on Drew Liner. There won't be any access. If you don't want us to have emergency access, then we will turn and curve the road, and there'll be high-back curb, and there won't be the ability for anyone to go down Drew Liner. But right now, Drew Liner will have a ability for an emergency access, and that's per the request of staff. There's no other development. There's no part of our development that can be utilized in Drew Liner Road.
Thanks, Shawn. Lisa Klepper?
Hi.
Lisa Klepper. I live at 908 Michigan Avenue, and I have property at 1752 up the road, which is actually adjacent to this area. It's an agricultural piece of property. Couple of things that I want to make sure that, you know, are addressed with this is the entrance to this... the entrance to this property is that it all comes out onto Nova Road. So, the current development comes out, has one way out of that development, onto Nova Road, which then you have to go Nova Road to 192. There is no light at 192 and Nova Road and it's a hot mess. If you've ever been over there, it's a hot mess. And if you need to turn left, forget about it. You need to turn right, make a U-turn, come up around and go because you can never get across. So, before they add another 74 homes back there, we need to get a light at 192 and Nova Road. They also need to have in that development, the existing development that they're planning to go through, there's only one way out. So, what's the other way for them to get out? It shouldn't be another exit point, even if you said, okay, well, the emergency is going to be Drewliner Road, that still gets out onto Nova Road. That other exit needs to be onto another main road to get out onto 192. Not everything just spilling all out onto Nova Road, which again is a mess. If you try to drive down there in the morning, it's awful. And it's only going to get worse. Bus Depot going in, I mean, it's just going to get worse. So, that property, I oppose having 74 homes built on such a small area right next to my property. If they were making them, you know, one-acre lots or even a half-acre lot, that would be fine. But they're putting them so close together that I can knock on my neighbor's window from my kitchen window. And that's just too close to have it by that conservation area. We're destroying, you know, our water. We have, you know, issues with water. So, that's the wetlands that are over there. We still... I still am having problems. I've called twice and nothing has been done. My property is flooding and the drainage on the east side of my property where they built the homes is all flooded and it never, never drains out. The culvert is full all the time. The drainage canal is full all the time, 100% of the time. So, I'd like to get those things fixed before we start adding stuff to the other side of my property because we've already ruined one side. I prefer not to ruin the other side. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klepper. Sean, would you like to speak to those items?
Certainly, Sean Hindle. The access to other points, there's in the subdivision to the west of us, there are connection roadways that go to the west and to the north. I actually have a client with a project that's going to give access out in that direction because we have to connect those roadways. Puffin Road is actually also going to be extended north to Lilian Lee. So, these people will be able to go out to the west, out to, I believe it's Mr. Chung's property. It's not Zuni.
Nora Tyson?
Nora Tyson. So, Nora Tyson Road, that road will be improved. And then Lilian Lee will be another connection. And then off Lilian Lee, Puffin Road will be another connection to 192. So, Puffin, you probably don't know, but just to the west of the Publix at Narcousie, there's two other properties and then a 40-acre. And Puffin Road is on the east boundary of that 40-acre parcel. So, that will be extended and improved up to Lilian Lee. Okay? As far as the drainage, this property does not drain to that canal. It drains to the north. There's about four feet of fall, little four feet of fall on the property that's to the east of us, goes from elevation 72 to 68. And at the north end of that property is an existing retention pond. The property that's to the... Excuse me, to the north of us, excuse me, south of us, adjacent to us, about elevation 73. Our ponds are controlled around 67, where the existing pond on the property to the east of us is controlled at 65. So, their top of bank is 68. We're matching grades to everything that is to the south of us at 73 with the backs of our lots. And then we have oversized lots on the east side of the property. And those oversized lots, only at the very northern part where the property drops so severely, is there'll be an elevation difference. And we've made those lots larger so we can bring our lots back to grade within our property. And then we're going to put a swell and a spreader swell to allow any water in the back that goes to that point to be treated to go to the north into the wetland. So, it's kind of a water budget for the wetland as well, which is required by the Water Manager District. So, we're trying to be good neighbors. We're not trying to fill our properties four or five feet above like a lot of subdivisions do. Our properties will be within 1400ths of the existing grade to below grade of existing. And then as we go along the east edge, it'll be anywhere from .8 feet to 2 and 1/2 feet different. But we're going to take the 2 and 1/2 and we're going to absorb it in the deeper lots that we created. So, we're going to try to match grade at the adjacent property lines.
Thank you, Ms. Hindle.
You're welcome.
Shirley... Is it Hood?
Hood, like Robin Hood.
Oh, Hood. I only see one O there. I'm sorry.
My name... Good evening. I have mine written out because I get nervous up here, so I have to read it. Good evening. My name is Shirley Hood. I live at 1758 RS Ranch Road, St. Cloud, Florida, which is just southeast of the parcel of land involved. We have lived at this location for over 40 years. I am here to object to the change in zoning from agriculture to R1B for these two parcels of land, 1750 and 1770 Drewliner. This zoning change is not compatible with the present zoning in the area. This will be adding 73 more homes on 62.5-foot lots. That's what that zoning allows. And a portion of the land involved is wetlands. A larger area adjacent to the land involved is also wetlands, some owned by Lanier Homes and some owned by the state of Florida. This same wetlands continues northeast on the property and then southeast. As mentioned in the Austin Environmental Consultants' evaluation of the site, any development-related impacts to onsite wetlands and other surface waters will require prior permit authorization from the state regulatory agency, which is the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the South Florida Water Management District. At the prior meeting on this matter, I turned in a photo my husband had taken of the gopher turtles in our area. And as mentioned in my daughter's letter to you on the same matter, see, they mentioned only one objection. Well, my daughter wrote a letter at the... for the last meeting. I intended in person at the meeting and another resident of the... off Drewliner also attended. Others sightings of endangered species and wildlife is in the area there. We need to take care... We need to care more about not damaging our environment any more than we have already done. Requiring large lot sizes will help by providing more open space on each lot. Also, developers should be made to bear more of the bill related to safer roads before continuing with adding more and more vehicles to our streets. 192 and Nova Road is already a very dangerous intersection. If you all insist on pushing through this application that it should be RE 100-foot wide lots, one-acre lots or half-acre lots, but not R1B 62-foot lots, so as to not take care of the property. Our property is already flooding from the Lanier Home development there and now we'll even get more water because if you're going to allow them to put in that type of development, the roads are going to just flood back to the wetlands and then it's going to come up the side of us and put us underwater more. And we used to be in orange grove. You know how high orange groves are? Well, the bottom part isn't high anymore because Lanier is up here and we're down there. The developers should be required to provide some sort of amenities for these new buyers, just like Lancaster East provides for theirs. They have more open space and pool, swimming pool, et cetera. But there's nothing planned for this here development that's going there. Again, these lots should be larger and therefore less pollutants and maybe a chance to save the beautiful oak trees at 1770 Drewliner Road. That one lot has huge oak trees on it and you're going to... They're going to have to take all that out in order to put the housing that they want to put on there.
Thank you, Ms. Hood.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Sean, you're on again.
Good evening, Sean Hindle. As far as the drainage, we're not only doing a discharge analysis for putting less drainage off the property that's happening currently. We're also doing a volume analysis that will make sure that the volume of water is less. So, there should not be any impact. It should be a positive impact to the adjacent properties as far as drainage leaving the site. The comments on Nova Road, 74 homes aren't going to warrant a signal. It's a state road and I'll have to go through a warrant analysis with Nova Road. And I believe, and I'm not positive, but I believe there were some studies that were done for DOT, both at Pine Grove and at Nova, for a push-button project. But I don't know what the status of that is. But if you have any questions, be answering.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? That hasn't spoken? Yes, please come forward, state your name, address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
My name is Philip Lantry, 3316 Cypress Point Circle, St. Cloud, Florida. I just want to speak on behalf of the residents there and this sort of subdivision, in my opinion, this is synonymous with the same sort of issues that we've been causing in St. Cloud over the last several years. And when I say that, I mean that a lot of the subdivisions are poorly planned. They're put in very quickly and it's so people can get in, make some money and get out. And I don't really see the benefit that it brings to the entire community. When you talk about benefit to the entire community, you need to talk about amenities. What are the people that are going to live in these homes? What do they have in that area as far as, you know, do they have shops they can go to? Do they have a place where they can go, take their kids to Taekwondo or something like that? And I feel that, you know, we cannot allow these types of housing, low-density residential housing, to just occur without some proper planning about the surrounding area. Now, we had looked at the area for Center Lake Ranch earlier. I thought that that sort of plan took into account a lot more planning because it really looked at, you know, you've got some low-density residential, you've got some higher-density residential, you've got some office parks, you've got some different things. And it also appeared that this particular master plan for this has not been provided yet. And I would urge you to, you know, before approving a zoning change like this, even though it is following the future land use, I would suggest that you see a master plan and see how the developer is planning on improving the area, not only for the people that would be moving there, but for the surrounding homeowners and people that live there. And so, I would urge you to wait on this until you see a master plan and also give some more residents time to give their opinion on it.
Thank you.
The project itself, yes, does have recreational improvements, does have open space for the residents in accordance with your land development code. As far as a master plan for the surrounding area and amenities, Taekwondo and shops, that's part of your future land use map. This property is on your future land use map and that master plan is slated for low-density residential. And that's what we've asked for, for a zoning that's compatible with low-density residential. We have presented our plan to the city. I believe you guys had a first reading on that and it's coming back because of... Or supposed to be with this reading, but for some reason they got pushed back to September 9th. So, the plan is there. It's been shared. And again, this site, I don't think would work very well for amenities for commercial or that type of development.
Thank you. Someone else like to speak to this item?
Hi. My name is Charlie Reyes. I live in 5424 Manchester Drive. My lot number is the 189. Yes, I'm right at the back of the new development that they're going to build, okay? I know the owner of the 18 acres, very nice guy. But I want to bring some things to my attention. I never got a letter. The only way I knew that this was happening was because that lady came to our house to tell us about what is happening to be in this meeting. So, I heard the gentleman over here saying the letter's going out, but my lot is right next to it and I never got a letter. So, that's one thing. Second thing, I heard from the neighbors that the developer that is going to work on there, they're going to go right through our, you know, the, like you said, the north or west, I don't know. The thing is, right next to our house and they're going through Lancaster, okay? And if they break, what I was telling them is that if anything happens to that road, we are going to be responsible of fixing that road. And I want to know if that is a true statement or not. So, that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that your... Speak to Mr. Hindle?
I can't speak to notification. Your staff can do that. As far as the roadways, yes, they're public roadways. They are extended per the master plan to be provided for access to the adjacent properties. And that's the whole purpose of why these roads and the road next to his house is stubbed out to this property. We're disconnecting those and starting that continuous plan. The whole idea of that plan is to give alternate routes and to allow people to utilize the infrastructure so not everybody's out on Nova Road, that they're going through some of the other subdivisions and to some of the other routes. So, that's why we are connecting to those roadways. It's proposed and planned that way and that's what we're trying to do. If the maintenance of the roadway, if Lanar has a CDD, then, yes, the CDD is responsible for the maintenance of that roadway. So, if they do, that's... They would maintain it. Otherwise, it's a public road and it's publicly maintained. But a CDD is a public sector government and that would... If that's what they're being told, that's probably why, because that has an operation of maintenance.
Thank you. Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out that as far as the legal requirements, we also post the property and put an ad in the paper also. But we'll go back and review our process to make sure that, you know, everybody gets notified. I hear their concerns and we'll go back and look at our processes. That's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Councilwoman Matheny, you going to jump in here now?
Yeah, about the notification. So, I brought this up before. I think it was back when we were dealing with the property near Narcousie and 192 was the 300-feet notification doesn't make sense when you're on large tracts of land. And I asked at that time that we could revisit it and like make some common sense decisions with that, like if you're out in the middle of, you know, 10-acre tracts of land, 300-feet doesn't work. So, I guess we haven't done that yet. So, can I task you, city manager, to get that done?
You guys good with that?
Yep.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak to this item? You have something new to add? Wait just a minute. Just someone right here. Why don't you come first, ma'am?
My name is Cynthia Hall. I've lived at 5525 Nova Road in St. Cloud for 35 years and my consideration is the water. And I realize they may have a good drainage plan. The only problem is, how long does it take? It may drain, but what if it takes two weeks to drain instead of two days and the water is in my house before it drains? So, I'm just... I hope they know what they're doing when they say they know about the drainage because I've been there 35 years and when we had Hurricane Wilma came in 2005, I'd never seen water come up like that. And now, look 16 years later, what's going to happen if we have another Wilma? So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Scott Sager. I own the properties on 1776 Drewliner that's just to the east and to the south of the planned development. I agree with Mrs. Fender and Mrs. Hood and everybody that's kind of said the same things. And obviously, drainage is obviously one of the biggest issues that we have. And the density of the properties that you're putting in there, it does have an impact. I know everybody feels like, well, we can... We're just putting this on, this 18 acres or 22 acres total. But I've been out there for seven years and just even the small development of putting the pond and the recent development that went across from Mrs. Hood's property, we used to have... used to have 30-plus turkeys out there, now we're down to a handful. Most of the wildlife has gone. The biggest problem with the drainage is, I know there's a plan, and they say, yeah, we're going to take care of the drainage, but the problem is, is just like these, that has also been mentioned, we have no recourse. If that doesn't go according to plan, we have no recourse. We, you know, we're not financially able to fight these guys, to go take them to court, to sue them, to do all those things. They're, you know, we're fighting against an animal that has basically unlimited supply of money, and so we have no recourse if that drainage doesn't go according to plan. So, yeah, they can put all those plans out there, but when that doesn't happen, we're stuck. And so I object for the same reasons.
Thank you. Hendl?
Sean Hendl. Hanson Walter's been in business for over 40 years. Over 40 years. We've permitted over 5,500 projects in that 41 years. And we've never had a lawsuit, and we've never had a drainage issue with any of our projects that has not been resolved.
Sean, can you speak into the mic? Can you turn the mic up a little bit, please?
Yeah, talking right into it.
Could you start over? Okay.
Sure. Hanson Walter's been in business for 41 years. We've permitted over 5,500 projects in that 41 years. I've been with the firm since 1989, total, with a little bit of relief to be the city engineer for the city of Kissimmee. We will get all of our necessary permits that are reviewed not only by your staff and your drainage people, but it's reviewed by the South Florida Water Management District staff. I've never had a project that I've had an issue with adjacent property owners and drainage. There are projects in the county that have, and I've represented those projects as far as trying to fix them, mostly as a public project, either for the cities or the counties. And we have addressed the problems that were put in those projects. But current design, and what we're doing for this design is, is, along history, you used to have to only provide for peak discharge. So you would run your pre-developed models, find out how much water's leaving the site, and then you'd run a post-development model and make sure that your peak discharge was, pre versus post, was less. We don't do that anymore. So we're on limited water systems, so we have to further reduce the discharge from the site, much further reduce the discharge from the site. And we also do what's called a volumetric analysis. So you used to only look at that one point with the highest point of the design storm, and that's how we figured out our discharge amounts. Now we're also taking the volume of water that hits that property and where it goes, and we make sure that our ponds are sized for that volume of water as well. So even though it trickles out over time, we make sure that the volume is not increased as well. So some of the older developments, and I'm not familiar with the Villanar development, I wasn't the engineer on that project, I don't know what their engineers designed, but I'm sure they got the same permits that we have to get, and I don't know if they had to do a volume analysis. So I can guarantee that when we're done, that we will make sure that we address drainage on our project, drainage on the adjacent projects, and make sure that we have positive outfalls and that we do not make any impact adversarial to adjacent property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, and I'm not sure about the last name. Frank, if you'll come up and you'll share your name, address, please.
Frank Picone, 1743 Chatsworth Circle. I am in Lancaster. I left the central Florida area, Orlando to be specific, which I lived 20 years, to come to someplace green, to come to someplace where I can still enjoy nature and the wildlife. And we're all settled there, and next thing we know, we got these all developments. And I get it, they pay taxes, they bring money, and you guys need the money. But we have electrical problems, if you didn't know, in that particular area. Power keeps falling on, and the gentleman, he's an engineer, but he's been around for, what, 40 years, he just said, getting permits. Well, you know what? We still need a better plan and some more information. They claim here that they're getting letters. We're not getting letters. We're not, we're not being informed. And we're here surprised. They run this thing like cattle in a presentation. We don't know half of the language, you know? It's very difficult for us to comprehend what you guys are trying to pass. Now, it's been through an ordinance, the DRC staff, the Planning Commission. I don't know how many of you have been there, actually walked the site. So all I'm asking here is, and I know, Council Matheny, that you're a very green person in regards to that, all pro-nature. I just hope that that same spirit goes for you all, the rest of you. We just want to live without problems of lack of power, water spreading into our properties, poor, poor, poor everything. It seems like nobody knows nothing. Somebody here said, he doesn't know, or he's going to check with his staff. There's a lot of questions. Don't you agree? There's a lot of questions. So I just want to leave it at that. Let's plan a little bit better, and let's communicate a little bit better. That's all the citizens, that's all we want. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, council people.
Thank you.
Once again, Sean Hendl. The electric is through, you see, we'll submit plans, they'll create redundancy, and they put those plans together. We just pay for the conduit and rely on their engineers. I know Juan Diaz, I know Mike Galloway, they're excellent engineers, and they've done a ton of projects for me, and I'm sure that they'll take care of this. As far as Lancaster and the drainage, where the gentleman said he lived in Lancaster, and one of the big complaints was if you look at the amount of pond that is in Lancaster, compared to the number of units, the ponds are smaller. So you have to dig them deeper and have to fill the property more so you have more storage in your ponds. That creates the lots being a lot higher than the adjacent properties. That's, our pond is sized, the Lancaster's actually a lot higher than our lots, so they're almost two feet higher than the lots that we're putting in. So our pond is properly sized, we tried to maintain grades a little bit better, and we'll have to transition to the Lancaster lots because they're just so high. But our project won't do that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken that would like to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am?
Hi.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Jamiesse Lewis. As a probation officer, I would prefer not to say my address, if that's okay with you?
That's fine.
All right, thank you. Not to beat a dead horse over the head, because everybody has really all said the same thing. I've been in St. Cloud probably close to 20 years, and I love it. I mean, it's home. And I've seen a change. And as far as like new developments, new housing, new people coming, I'm so glad the city is growing. Just the problem is, we're not growing with the city. Like, we need more businesses, we're having all these houses and developments come, it's like, well, they should come and bring a new restaurant with them, or come and bring a new store with them, a new storefront. It's just like, great, come and build a new street with them. He's like, oh, there's all these entryways, and it's like, have you driven down Jones Road? That's not really an access point that you want to just kind of fly down through. I live on Jones, and I see all these people, I don't know what the speed limit is. It goes from 30 to like 75 down there, and it's pitch black. So before we build and add and do all this and approve, let's add some streetlights. Because you cannot see, there's been, I don't know, five accidents since I've been there in the last couple of months. It's like, we're not, we need to fix home first before we add any more. Like, please, talk to these developers. Say, just like the young lady said, what else can you do for us? Are we adding a swimming pool? Are we adding something for the citizens who live here already? We need more. There's three, like, three restaurants here, we need more. It takes me, I work in Kissimmee, it literally takes me like 45 minutes to go down 192. It's insane. Like, what's our plan with that? I can't even get down the street. So please reconsider. Again, I love the growth, I love the city, I love the people, I love it here. But in a minute, small-town living is almost out. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else have something new to add? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Do we have any discussion? Councilmember Trace?
All right, got a couple of questions. First off, is it possible for us to do or look into if the county has done a warrant study at Narcusi, or at Nova and 192 for a traffic signal? I've seen numerous accidents there, you know, I don't know what the tipping point is of us getting a signal warranted there, but looking into that. And then, second one, on the drainage issue on the east side of this property from, I don't know what that neighborhood was, I guess Lancaster Park, east, east. I did see the Public Works Director get with you guys, got an email address or phone number or something? Okay, looking into that pond, because it does look like a weird situation where how it wraps around that corner, so just make sure.
It's not the pond, I mean, the pond doesn't.
It's your property, yeah, draining into, or off-site drainage. So that's one thing I wanted to bring up on this one, just making sure that through the engineering process, looking into, is there any off-site areas that drain onto this property and maintaining that flow on and through onto the wetlands? I guess if you want to address that.
Sure. Yeah, so the drainage pattern for this property is from the south to the north, goes into an existing wetland north of the property. And actually, a portion of that wetland's on the property. So we don't have any off-site property that drains to us. The adjacent properties also drain north to south. And then the, one parcel that's south to us, we'll make sure of that again, but again, I don't believe I have drainage coming from that property onto this one. It's kind of the high point at elevation 73 right there.
Okay. And on streetlights, we do, on city roads, require streetlights. Jones Road's a county road, so I, you know, I can't really have us comment on that, but is that something we can reach out to the county? And if there are numerous accidents in the same curves, get some street lighting out there. There's solar streetlights now that you don't need to put in a bunch of conduit and a bunch of power, you can just put in solar streetlights to help alleviate those situations.
So, yes, on Jones Road, we're actually designing that as a condition of one of our projects on Jones Road. So we've offered to the county to do right-of-way maps and provide that design. That design does include street lighting. So we are having streetlights designed for that roadway.
Perfect.
And all of these roadways will be dark sky and will have lighting.
And then, last one is the public notice. Do we know if those went out?
Yes, we do, we do a 300-foot mailing per state. And we also, we do one for residents and one for tenants, so we make sure that both are covered to the best of the records kept with the county. We can't control how fast those are changed, when people move, when people buy and sell. We also advertise in the paper, I believe this one went twice, and the site posting on the sign.
Can you guys email us what those mailers look like? Because there's a lot of mail I get that just kind of gets torn up and thrown away, even if it looks official because, you know, just on the way to the trash can.
Of course.
So maybe just us changing the way that looks to where it doesn't instantly go to the trash might, might help as well.
And how many letters went out?
I feel like it was 158, but I don't know. And all those cost money, too, just keep that in mind, but.
Yeah.
I don't know that I have that number with me. But it was in the paper three times, actually.
I believe the applicant pays for the mailings, right?
Oh, perfect.
It's all part of the application permitting process costs. And they're sent out by certified mail.
Oh, they're certified?
Which is part of the reason, frankly, which is part of the reason why they're, but people don't get them, unfortunately.
Yeah.
But that's the statute, that's the requirement to the statute.
So, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah.
Councilman, Mr. Trace, Councilmember Trace, are you through?
Yeah, I'm good for now.
Councilwoman Matheny?
So I've experienced this problem in my job where we'll send certified letters, and that's, that's the problem, is people won't necessarily get them, because they're like, I don't know what this is, I'm not wasting my time. So we do both ways. We'll send regular mail and certified, just because then, you know, the likelihood of someone opening them is greater. So, I mean, that's an option, too, we look at.
Any other discussion from council? Any questions? What is the pleasure concerning a motion regarding this final reading? Go ahead.
I appreciate Sean in doing some of your dual diligence. I've not seen a project that you've done that I had to go back to and take a look at, so I appreciate that. For that reason, I'm going to do a motion to approve.
We have a motion for councilmember Askew. Do we have a second? I'll make a second. As Mayor, I would like to say this. It's a tough thing sitting on this council. When we get sworn in, we lay hand on a Bible, and we swear to uphold the law. And part of the challenge that we face is that people have a right in Florida to purchase land. People have a right in Florida to develop that land. Matter of fact, the state is just forcing all of our cities to add to our charters and our ordinances that, you know, Floridians have a property rights. The challenge is, if they, if a landowner takes and follows all of the hoops that the law says you have to follow, then, you know, it becomes a real challenge for us, and we certainly don't want to impact, you know, neighboring or have minimal impact on neighboring neighborhoods. But then again, it's a challenge because here's a landowner who's followed all the laws, gotten all the, made all the investments and things that they need to get their project through. And it just presents a challenge and a frustration, certainly for me, and when we're setting up here, we realize it's a double-edged sword, it makes it real difficult. Do we have any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mary Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-1.
Brings us to items. If you can move out. If you have any discussions, please do that outside. Thank you. Brings to items 7, 8, and 9.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-36.
Stop just a second. Y'all need to move on out, please? I'm sorry.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 219 acres identified as the ranch at St. Cloud located east of Narcousie Road and south of Jones Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-37, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida assigning a future land use designation of park open space to approximately 219 acres identified as the ranch at St. Cloud located east of Narcousie Road and south of Jones Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission, recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability, copies on file, and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-38, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida assigning a zoning district of open space and recreation compatible with a park open space, future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2021-37 for approximately 219 acres identified as the ranch at St. Cloud located east of Narcousie Road and south of Jones Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the Planning Commission, recommendation and proof of publication, severability and effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Clockers. Good evening, City Council. I'm Erin Stirk, Principal Planner with the Community Development Department. The first request before you today is for the ranch at St. Cloud voluntary annexation. The first request before you today is for the Ranch at St. Cloud voluntary annexation. The subject properties are approximately two-hundred-and-nineteen acres of land generally located south of Jones Road and east of Narcoosi Road. The subject properties qualify for annexation under Florida statutes and are contiguous to the city limits to the south and are reasonably compact. The property currently has the county's future land use designation of low-density residential and zoning of the urban settlement. The proposed request meets the intent for the strategic plan goals for growth management, economic development, and public service. Both the DRC and Planning Commission recommended approval of this request. As such, it is requested that the City Council approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-six for this voluntary annexation. The following request is the companion comprehensive plan amendment requesting to change the future land use designation on the same area of land, two-hundred-and-nineteen acres in size. The request is to change the existing county future land use designation from low-density residential to park open space. Staff has reviewed the request and agrees that the proposal is compatible with the general development pattern in the area and has no adverse impact on city facilities. The map on this slide is the existing future land use designations. Again, this proposal meets the strategic plan goals for growth management, economic development, and public service. Honored before June first, twenty-twenty-one, the DRC recommended approval of the request. The Planning Commission recommended approval and to transmit to DEO for inter-agency review based on the sixteen findings in the Land Development Code. As such, it's requested that the City Council approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-seven for the future land use map amendment based upon the sixteen findings and to transmit to DEO for inter-agency review. And then the last request before you tonight is the zoning map amendment. It's the companion request. The proposal is to change the zoning from the county's urban settlement designation to our open space and recreation zoning designation in the city, which is compatible with the requested park open space land use designation. Staff has reviewed the request and agrees that the proposal is compatible with the general development pattern in the area and has no adverse impacts on city facilities. In contrast, it's going to provide a city facility. The map on this slide is the existing zoning designations in the area. Again, it meets those same three comprehensive plan, strategic plan goals. Honored before June first, twenty-twenty-one, DRC recommended approval of requests. The Planning Commission also recommended approval based on the sixteen findings, and as such, it is requested that the City Council approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-eight for this zoning map amendment based on the sixteen findings. And I know you might have some questions about what's proposed to go on on the property, and if you do, the applicant is here, or a department representative from Parks and Rec is here as well, so we're both available for questions.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Any of these three items, yes?
Hello, Sandy Simone, fifty-four sixty-five, Hanson Road, St. Cloud, Florida, three-four seven seven one. Yes, I would like to hear what they're going to do with the two-hundred acres, because I think it's great if it's going to be a park, I'm just a little suspicious. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Wouldn't it be nice if we had a room full of people saying, well, thank you for purchasing this land and preserving our community? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. First of all, Mr. Sturgeon.
Mayor, could I have Stephanie Holt Kemp come and talk about the vision for that park?
That was certainly on my mind, it would be next. Stephanie, would you please come and share with some of the plans?
Stephanie Holt Kemp, Parks and Recreation Director. Currently, in this next fiscal year, we're actually going to go through the master plan process for that park, take, I know the direction when we purchased the property was to keep it more of a passive park, so that's, I mean, that's my direction, you know, so that's where we're at. Hopefully, the master plan process will start sometime after the first of the year.
Okay. Do we have, Councilmember Askew?
So, I mean, in your eyes, before this master plan thing, what do you see in this, in this park? I mean, just, do you see, like, baseball fields, picnics, what's going on there?
Yeah, no, it was my vision, it would stay, you know, very, very passive, and have a nice trail system through the whole wetlands area throughout the whole park. When I say trail system, you know, raised boardwalks, just really nice, maybe some camping, some primitive camping for the Boy Scouts. Only non-motorized boats in the lake, limit the amount of fishing in the lake, because the more we allow people to fish, then we won't be able to fish after several years, so. And then we've applied for some grants, so there'll be stipulations on what we can actually do with the property if we get the grants, and the two grants really will limit the amount of active recreation that can go on, on the property.
Thank you. Any other questions before Ms. Kemp runs back to her seat?
You say passive, but the thought process when that was purchased was having the weddings going on still?
Yeah, my apologies, yeah, so the active part of the recreation is going to be the event center, what is currently the active part.
Okay, and then the rest will be passive, the nature trails and all that?
Yes.
Part of our desire is to preserve as much of the natural layout of that property and to save as many gopher turtles and turkeys and everything else as we can on the property. Any other comment from the council, please? If not, we'll have discussion and/or further motion on item number seven, ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-six.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four-zero.
I'd like to entertain a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-seven, item number eight.
So moved.
Have a motion from Councilmember Matheny? Second. Second, Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four-zero.
The mayor would like to get in on this, so he's going to make a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-eight. Could I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four-zero.
Brings us to item number ten, Madam Clerk?
First public hearing for ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash fifty, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the property rights element of the comprehensive plan of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication applicability and effect, subraibility, conflict, copies on file, and effective date.
Jesse?
Good, good evening, Jesse Anderson, Senior Planner. This is the property rights element that is associated with Florida State Statute mandate for us to update and adopt. It is a citywide comprehensive plan amendment. The element's purpose is, in accordance with the legislative intent expressed in Florida statutes one-sixty-three and one-eighty-seven, governmental entities are to include in their respective comprehensive plans the acknowledgement and constitutional protections of private property rights. This element of the comprehensive plan is to be the guiding principle by which the city, as it continues to grow, bases its decisions when it pertains to the Land Development Code, city policies, and other applicable decision-making processes on the private property rights of the residents and businesses of the City of St. Cloud. The one and only current goal for this property rights element is that the City of St. Cloud is to adopt and incorporate specific property rights set forth by Florida statutes that shall consider in local, that shall be considered in local decision-making. The first objective is that the City of St. Cloud will ensure that property owners have the right to physically possess and control their interests in the private property, including easements, leases, or mineral rights. The second objective is that, the second objective protects the rights of a property owner to use, maintain, develop, and improve their property for their personal use or for the use of any other person subject to state law and local ordinances. The third objective encourages the rights of property owners to privacy, excluding others from their property and the protection of their possession of their property. And finally, the fourth objective is to uphold property owner's right to dispose of their property through sale and gift. This is consistent with the strategic plan goals of growth management and public service. DRC and staff recommend approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash fifty. Recommendation from the Planning Commission will be available after the August seventeenth meeting, and we do request that City Council does approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash fifty and transmits it to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for inter-agency review. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, would you take just a moment to speak to this item, the fact that it's a quasi-judicial item and where it came from?
Well, this came out of, as the mayor mentioned earlier, it came out of some legislative act that came into place, and actually, the, you know, our review of the staff memo was associated with this legislative action, said it was essentially one that was pushed forward by the private property owners with regard to their future development rights, and the intent of it is to protect the future development rights essentially, although in our view, it does have some language in it that seems to protect everybody's property rights, but the real, the real underlying intent of it was to essentially ensure that local governments are providing all of the development opportunities that private property owners are entitled to under the, under the law that exists today. So, that's really the general of the common. What is also interesting about this, and your staff really needs to be commended on this, because essentially, local governments have been scrambling since this law came into place, because essentially, the legislation provides that you cannot do any large-scale amendments to the city's comp plan until this property rights element was adopted. So, they've moved very quickly to get a very good product in front of you, to get adopted quickly, so that the city can continue to move forward with its review of other applications on larger projects, and I think they are to be commended for getting it in front of you as quickly as they have.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-one fifty.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace. Second. A second for Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell? Motion carries four-zero.
Aye.
Second and final reading for resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash one forty-six R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one annual action plan for the community development block grant program, providing for conflict and providing an effective date.
Ms. Miller?
Good evening, Veronica Miller, Deputy City Manager. The twenty-twenty-one annual action plan is to utilize the community development block grant entitlement that the city received several years ago. Background on this is that we have adopted our five-year consolidated plan, twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-three, that does identify the priority needs of our community. We adopted the twenty-twenty annual action plan, and like the twenty-twenty actual plan, the twenty-twenty-one will benefit low-to-moderate income individuals, households, and neighborhoods. The eligible uses of the funding will be for public improvements and facilities, housing rehabilitation, public services, and economic development. The estimated funding for twenty-twenty-one is three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars nine-hundred-and-twenty-two. We have prior year's reallocation of three-hundred-thousand dollars, plus the amount I just said, so we will be spending six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty-two. The projects will be for the administration, as well as community facilities, infrastructure, public services, and housing rehabilitation. The allocation provisions are that we must submit this by Monday, so eight-sixteen-twenty-two, I believe, is the, when the money should be used by. We have a required thirty-day comment period that was completed in June, and no comments were received. We have already held one public hearing in June also, and then today's final public hearing, which is a second public hearing, which is more than the minimum that is required by the CDBG administration. So, the next steps following this, we will submit by Monday, so that we can proceed with our program and in the future begin our drawdowns from the line of credit pending HUD approval.
Thank you.
So, this is consistent with our strategic plan goals of economic development and growth management. Staff recommends approval, and we request that the City Council also approve this resolution twenty-twenty-one dash one forty-six R.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have discussion, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not, then we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Askew?
So, possibly down in the future, let's say somebody's trying to bring a Boys and Girls Club down to St. Cloud, would this money be, possibly be able to be used for that?
Yes. So, we are able to use public services as part of this.
Okay, I'll keep you up to speed on that.
Any other discussion or comment by council?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew for approval, I'll make a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four-zero.
Brings to item number twelve, resolution number twenty-twenty-one oh sixty-three R.
Public hearing for resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-six-three R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use to operate an adult congregate living facility used on a three-point-seventeen-acre property located east of Old Canoe Creek Road and north of Fifth Street, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening, Council, Abismal Abreu, here assisting the Planning and Zoning Division. This resolution, can you guys hear me? Sorry. This resolution is for a conditional use on a property that's approximately three-point-seventeen acres, located east of Old Canoe Creek and, Old Canoe Creek Road and north of Fifth Street. This is a little picture of the zoning map as currently presented. Moving on on that, the property is actually a zone highway business with a future land use of commercial. The proposed use is for an adult congregant, congregant living facility, which translates to an assisted living facility. So, old Canute Alf is actually not the puppet, I just learned that was the name of a puppet back in the day, he's actually assisted living facility, that's what he stands for. I feel old. I know, yeah, I got a lot, a lot of grief for that, but I just learned that yesterday, just wanted to clarify. This development is actually compatible with the general development pattern in the area, there's actually an assisting living facility on the south of the property, so we are building each other, and at this time, there's no adverse impact on any of the city facilities. This item came before you on July fifteenth, City Council meeting, and it was continued to this meeting, pending a three-preservation plan from the applicant. I would like to just notate that the applicant received the information that they needed from the city Friday, July thirtieth. Our deadline, too, so made for the agenda, was the following Monday, which was the second, so they did a quick turnaround to get us that information that you have in your packet tonight. Both DRC and the Planning Commission recommended approval of this resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero-sixty-three R, based on the six factual matters of the Land Development Code, and I'm here tonight just requesting that the City Council also approves this resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero-sixty-three R. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as the staff from the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as the presentation, I believe the applicant is here, and they also have a presentation they would like to provide to council.
This time, we'll recognize the applicant, if you'd like to speak, please step forward.
Good evening, Scott Larch, Centio Investments, eight-hundred North Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida. Been in the industry for twenty years, and I've never heard the Alf joke before, but I will absolutely. absolutely be using that going forward. I wanted to take a minute and share with you a little bit about our background and the senior living community we're planning here in St. Cloud. I've spoken to several of you already, so I'll keep this brief. My partner and I, as I said, have been in the industry for 20 years, investing in communities around the country. We've recently partnered with Eric Moore, who is a vet and second-generation owner-operator of assisted living communities in the Tampa area. Together, we're launching an affordable senior living company called Imprint Senior Living. We are locally owned and operated here in central Florida. Our mission for Imprint is to provide uncompromised care to more seniors in a comfortable and secure setting at a price that nearly every American can afford. The way that we, the way we do that is by designing an efficient building with all the amenities that residents in these communities actually use and none of the ones that they don't. Consequently, we're able to deliver quality care for prices more than 30% below industry averages. St. Cloud is exactly the kind of market that we like, one that's experiencing high growth and has older, older suppliers, older providers of these services. The senior population in St. Cloud is expected to grow by more than 6% in the next five years, and there hasn't been a new senior living community developed for more than 20 years. The average age of the communities in this market is 34 years. Additionally, there are no memory care communities in St. Cloud. It's likely in the next few years that as you all experience growth, not just in your senior population, but in the adult children moving into the community that likely bring their, their parents with them, if no new properties are developed, they'll have to go outside the market to the Hunters Creek area, Lake Nona, those type of areas to receive the care they need. We believe your seniors deserve a new option for affordable, excellent care in the community, and we'd love to provide that with your support. Additionally, we've spent some time since the last meeting working to address the council's concerns regarding the trees on the property and share the desire to preserve as many trees as we reasonably can. I'm going to turn it over to our civil engineer, Justin Horn, or Justin Hamm from Kimley Horn, who's been working with our arborist to describe these changes in more detail for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Justin Hamm, Kimley Horn, as mentioned, the engineer for this project, and...
Could you take your mask off so we could hear a little clearer, please?
Sorry, Justin Hamm, Kimley Horn, engineer for this project. So as mentioned before, there was some concerns or questions in the last meeting in regards to our tree plan and what we were going to do here on the site, so I'll try and keep this presentation direct. I know it's getting a little later, so... But this is aerial of the site, and if you take a look at it, the canopy looks pretty impressive, but when you start to peel back these layers of what's actually on site, the trees that are actually on site, you'll start to see there are different types of trees out here. So there, there are some oaks, there are some camphor trees, and as I'm sure most of you know, the camphor tree is a level one invasive, so most of the time, those are removed from the site. There were some larger ones that we've tried to incorporate into this site, just so, to provide that additional buffer from the adjacent properties. And then there's also some, there are some live oaks, there are some laurel oaks, there are some water oaks, and as most of you know as well, the laurel oaks and water oaks only have a lifespan of about 25, 35 years, and then they start to deteriorate pretty rapidly, start to rot out, start to fall. That's where you see a lot of the damage from those trees during hurricanes and those kind of things. So we took all those things into account. During this tree survey, they also determined the diameter of the trees, so we knew what trees, what size trees were out there. And they also did a quick visual of the health and the status of the trees. So if there were any that were fallen or dead, they were able to recognize that, and there were several that were noted on this survey as well. So we then reached out to the city arborist, Mr. Keith Sabish, and we had him highlight, as mentioned in the previous meeting, that there were about eight or nine trees that were desired for us to look into further, to see about preserving. And so whenever we asked him to mark it up, he came back with this, this markup here that, that's shown. And as you can see, there are a lot more trees marked up than just eight or nine. He did that knowing that we couldn't preserve all of the trees that were within these areas, but as long as we preserved a majority of those, then that would be acceptable to the council and, or should be acceptable to the council, and we would be able to move forward with this project. We then scheduled a site visit with Mr. Sabish, actually, that took place this last Friday to just kind of go over the changes that we incorporated and to further evaluate the status and health of the trees that we were looking to preserve. So we took those trees, we took everything into account, we overlaid the site plan onto the tree survey, we added those highlighted areas, we provided that figure for you guys. We also removed the invasive trees, except for those that we preserved along the edge throughout the site, just to, to kind of help clean it up and really highlight the, the other trees that were out there, the oak trees. And then we started looking for site plan modifications that allowed as many trees as possible within the highlighted areas to be preserved. And actually, throughout this process, you can kind of see, we ended up changing the pond around a little bit, and we've actually since then even further modified the pond because there's a tree that's at the front entrance where that sidewalk is being removed that we want to try and, and preserve outside of that zone that, that was mentioned. And then we've also kind of adjusted the parking lot there, shifted it north, we took out some sidewalk along the south edge, we moved the dumpster up. So we, we made quite a few changes to the site plan to accommodate some of these trees that were within the highlighted areas from the, the city staff. And then out of those, you can see that there were a large majority of those trees within the highlighted, way more than the eight or nine that were mentioned originally, that we were actually able to preserve, and even were able to preserve six additional trees outside of those highlighted areas that were, that are proposed to serve, preserve. Some other considerations that, that we want to, to kind of highlight here, there are additional trees that were required to plant per the code with, shown within the landscape plans, and you can kind of see a little clip of that, of some of those things that we're showing there. There's a tree mitigation bank, but we actually won't have to get into there because based off of our tree mitigation plan, we are meeting the code requirements in replanning trees that will be healthier, vibrant, a lot better looking for this, this site. And then during the final review of the site plan, during the, the site development review process, we'll, we'll also have to comply with the city water management district requirements and those kind of things, which includes, like I said, the, the tree landscape requirements for the replannings. And then there's also no guarantee, guarantee that the trees will be preserved during that review because there are other limiting factors as far as fire department access and those kind of things that, that have to be preserved too. But, but we are working with the city and attempting to preserve as many trees as we possibly can, and that's, that's our desire as well. Thank you for your time. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. If you're home, I'm sure there'll be some. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? If not, we will have discussion, questions, and motion by council. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So when I saw the plan that was presented back to us, I was pretty disappointed because I felt like, you know, really, it was kind of like, here's the plan, and, and even when I heard the conversation that the arborist had, they were saying there was very limited trees that could be saved because the site plan really wasn't changed or revised around the trees in any way. It's kind of like, here's the plan, and so then we just got a little scruff around the edges. But if you can go back to your site plan, like you have, and I don't know, in the plan that we received as well, unless I missed it, didn't have any specification about what type of trees they were or what you were, you know, there were just X's on the trees. So there wasn't like, like where you have your north entrance, you're taking out three trees right there. I mean, that entrance can't get moved down or reconfigured in such a way that those three trees are saved. I mean, I drove by the site, I'm not an arborist, but there's some big, beautiful trees in there, and I just think it's a shame that we're, you know, wiping them all out. I understand you have your site constraints, and I, I would like to have the assisted living facility, but I also think it's kind of like this site just got put on this tract of land without any thought to the trees. And then I didn't really follow the highlighted, like on the bottom left, there's a highlighted and the label there says 14 slash 10 trees preserved. I don't really know what that means. 14 of 10 trees is preserved?
Yeah, so there were 10 trees that were highlighted by the city arborist, and we were actually able to save four outside of that besides those that were highlighted.
The ones that are outside your property?
No, ones that are to the north. So there's actually a tree right there where the sidewalk is being removed along the entrance there. So there's actually a, a pretty decent sized 41-inch tree, and we've actually, like I said, since further adjusted the pond top of bank in order to help preserve that tree as well.
So in the pond on the north side, you've got three, three trees there that are coming out, and you've got one, two, three, four, five trees on the east side, and I don't know what the trees are because it's not labeled, you know, so maybe they're camphor trees and it doesn't matter, but you know, there's five, eight, and then you've got three more in the other pond, there's 11, and you know, then there's three more at the driveway. I just feel like more could be done to try to work the site around trees. And like I said, I don't know whether those are good trees or not, or even what size they are. I don't even think the, the plan said what size they were.
The tree surveys where all that information was found, that was also provided to you guys in conjunction with the presentation and the, the figures as well.
Right, but like, I, I mean, do you want me to sit there and count? You know what I mean? Like, it would be nice to present the information in a way that's like, okay, what these trees are, what you're taking out. I don't know, like, I, I counted like, when I did my review, I think I have like 60 trees that were, that were getting taken out, and I just didn't have any detail. Like I said, I see a bunch of different areas that some tweaks could preserve additional trees.
Well, you, you also have to keep in mind too, that we're, we're bound by the constraints with the water management district as well. The size of these ponds are really the bare minimum that they can be, so there really is no making the pond smaller or anything like that to be able to accommodate those trees on the north side or even those trees on the south side.
You could put less pavement down. I mean...
You're good. I mean, if staff will allow us to have 10 parking spaces, we, we can definitely accommodate that to try and help save those trees. But we're also kind of following, like I said, the, the guidelines that are required by the city, the code in parking and fire access and, and all of those different elements. And, and I promise you, we've had a great deal of thought that's gone into this from every angle, on every aspect of the trees, to the ponds, to the access, to the fire, to all the code requirements, everything that's involved in this process, and this is what we found to, to be that optimum to where, we'd like to save every single tree. We, we really would, but, but at the end of the day, that's not feasible either. So this kind of presents that middle ground of being able to follow all those requirements and save as many trees as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think I ever said you had to save every tree. I just thought there should be some more, I guess, thought given to trying to make some tweaks. I mean, you have two engineers up here, so we know how, what it takes to get permits and approvals and things, so that's, that's the end of my comments.
We have other comments. Councilmember Trace.
I, I appreciate the amount of work and effort that went into this, and it, it does look like little tweaks, but it's a whole lot easier than just scraping the site and, and starting over, so I do appreciate that. On your comment on those three at the entrance, they are a different icon than the, the oak icon, so I think they either are camper or, I'm looking at the street view and it's got vines growing all over it, so it's probably just poor health.
Yeah, the, the more rounded edges are the oak trees, and then the more starish, I guess, icons are, are campers.
Okay. As I'm personally, I think this is a great location for assisted living facility. We desperately need extra rooms in St. Cloud, Osceola County, central Florida, so I personally am, am fine with this, and I appreciate the effort that was made to go above and beyond what our, what our code is.
Councilmember Askew.
For the record, I did meet with the folks on Zoom. They were very conscious about trying to save the trees. And I'm not an engineer, but, you know, I played with blocks and toys as a kid, and it doesn't seem like if you turn this thing any way, you're going to be bumping into something. So I, I appreciate trying to save as many trees as possible, and especially that one up front, that's a beauty. So, thank you.
I'd like to also say I met with the applicant, and, you know, I, I thought a lot about the comment that Councilmember Trace made last week, said if someone else had bought this property and was trying to develop it under non-conditioned use, they could just clear the whole project off. And so I certainly appreciate the effort that you've made. This is such a needed product, project for our city. We, we have some fine care facilities here, but they're old, they're getting dated, and the population has grown exponentially, and this is a huge, huge need. When I look at the, you know, I did do some online snooping, and some of the projects that you guys have done have just been incredible, really high-end stuff. I know that, you know, we don't have a, a final elevation of what's going on here, but I, you know, we'll certainly hold your feet to the fire to, if this gets approved, to have a quality product here. I agree, it fits the area. I, I thought if I end up there, in the future, it'd be nice, I could walk right across the street to Wally World if I needed to. You know, I love trees, but I just believe the need for our senior citizens here is so great, certainly we need to, I'd love to see preserve every possible tree that you can, and certainly keep that in mind when you're planting new trees. I think about the neighborhood where I live, I live in Stevens Plantation, and that property was cleared off as clear as you can get. But now when you drive down the street that I live on, it's on Marriott Way, it is lined with growing beautiful oak trees that now we have to continue to repair the sidewalks for, but they're beautiful. And, you know, I just think there's a lot of, I know you can't replace these, some of these signature oaks, but I sure would like to certainly preserve as many of them as we possibly can, and I think we certainly need this project. Any other comment? I make a motion for the approval of this project.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
No.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries three, one.
Thank you.
Public hearing for resolution number 2021-155R, resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number 2020-215R, which adopt, which adopted the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget for the City of St. Cloud, finding the city manager has certified there are prior year fund balances and a current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs and various funds not included in the original 2020, 2021 budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional funding and various funds, making supplemental appropriations within the fund.
Good evening. Jeff Cooper, Deputy Finance Director. This is budget amendment number five. As it shows, the background is per the city code, section 2-212 amendments after adoption. If during the fiscal year, the manager certifies that there are available for appropriation revenue in excess of those estimated in the budget, the City Council may, by resolution, make supplemental appropriation for the year up to the amount of each excess. And the city manager has certified funds are available to appropriate funds. This budget amendment meets the city's strategic plan goal for financial sustainability. First, we have the utility tax fund, zero dollar net increase. We're increasing the inter-fund transfer expenditures by $6,650 and decreasing the budgeted contingency expenditures by the same amount. This is for the required arbitrage rebate reporting requirements. And your next question is going to be, what is arbitrage? And here we go. So federal arbitrage rules are designed to prevent issuers of tax exempt bond debt from obtaining excessive or premature debt and therefore profiting from the investment of bond proceeds in income generating investments. Excess earnings must be remitted to the federal government as a rebate. So several of the items, as we go through here, relate to this arbitrage calculation, which is done by our financial consultant, PFM. The 1% fund, zero dollar increase, we're decreasing revenues for federal grants by $720,431 and decreasing contingency expenditures to fund the purchase of a new fire truck. and decreasing contingency expenditures to fund the purchase of a new fire truck. Budget amendment number three originally funded the fire truck with American Rescue Plan revenue replacement funding. This BA will change that to contingency funding. The reason we did that is because there are some additional requirements um for procurement when utilizing where the funding source is grants. So basically, we're just changing the funding source to contingency. The delivery time for fire trucks is already around eighteen months, so we're not wanting to delay that any further than we need to. So we don't end up with a fire truck, a fire station without a fire truck. Any questions so far?
Yeah, I had, I had a question about that. So I guess what, what else will we be using the ARA funds for?
To be determined.
Mayor, can I?
Mr. Manager, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Trace, uh, because there's a very tedious guidance given by the federal government, it's very difficult to know what that money can be used for. Until we have a clear answer from the federal government, how it can be spent. My recommendation is we sit on it, we bring it back to council, like I told you several meetings ago, before we make any determination how to spend it. Because it's really unclear and I'm, I'm concerned that we're going to spend and have to pay it back. It's not, it's got a lot of strings attached that we're starting to find out.
Okay.
But we'll have clear discussions with the council before we expense any of that or recommend that.
We're trying to verify, but um, the origin of this funding was actually revenue replacement. So the seven hundred and twenty thousand four thirty-one is our lost revenue due to COVID. So the year prior to COVID compared to the year of COVID last year, um, we took in seven hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars less in the one percent fund. So we're, we're trying to verify whether the replacement funding is still subject to additional restrictions. But since this monies came out, pretty much every month, they come out with some additional guidance. So it's getting more complicated by the, the day. Okay. Uh, also in the one percent fund, we increased inter-fund transfer expenditures by one hundred and thirty-nine thousand oh sixty-two and decreased the contingency expenditures by the same amount. Per the CM's direction, uh, to pay off the lease for the Pierce dash pumper engine. We had two more payments, so um, we decided to just move ahead and clear some debt when we can. Uh, the debt service fund, this is um for the money to pay off the PNC lease equipment the, of the principal of one hundred and thirty thousand two fifty-nine and interest of five thousand nine fifty-three for the Pierce dash pumper engine. So we, it'll be paid off and we keep it. In the capital projects fund, zero dollar increase. Uh, we're decreasing contractual service expenditures by seventy-three thousand dollars and increase the inter-fund transfers out by seventy-three thousand to close project PR nineteen oh nine Restrooms East Lakeshore. This project will be revisited when construction begins on the lakefront to Chisen Park Trail Connection, potentially in late twenty-two. Per the Parks and Rec Director. Uh, also to decrease the contractual services expenditures by thirty-five thousand and increase the inter-fund transfers out by thirty-five thousand to close project PR two thousand one Bike Path Seventeenth Street. Uh, this project ended up being completed with paving funding, so we don't need this funding anymore for that purpose. Uh, Parks impact fee um is so, is getting returned, the seventy-three thousand dollars. And we're putting it back into contingency, not that we intend to spend that this fiscal year, but that does technically result in an increase in budget of seventy-three thousand. Mobility impact fee, thirty-five thousand dollar increase. This is the return of the project money for uh, project PR two thousand one. Water fund, zero dollar increase. Uh, we're increasing professional services expenditures by five hundred and twenty-five thousand and decreasing contingency expenditures by the same amount for the E-rec consultants uh that are providing our emergency water distribution system response.
Councilmember Trace?
Question on that one. Um, I asked for the, the contract on that because it wasn't really shared before and it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand. How are we getting to the five twenty-five? Are we just extra months of?
Correct. And I went ahead and requested the additional funding for up to ninety days. I, again, they got one week into that. I think that's been a very effective, the plan we have in place. And then they got hit with COVID, so they stood down for a week. They actually started back today with the Ice Pig, Operation Ice Pig. I will reevaluate next week with them if that team is being effective. Remember that um, I have a great utilities team, but they are very tired. They've been working on this project for over two years, you know, and, and my staff is overwhelmed with, you know, other projects and things. And in fact, Mr. um, Crandall has not been able to even do some engineering plans for new developments. So I really need this force multiplier for at least another twenty workdays. Um, and I'll reevaluate, like I said, next week and see, do we need to continue that contract? And I have a meeting scheduled already to evaluate the effectiveness of that team.
And this isn't, this isn't the actual ice picking itself, is it the team managing the team?
That's correct.
Ice picking? It just seemed like a, a huge expense for that.
It, it is very expensive as, as I made that um request to the council and I spoke to each of you. And I know it's a, a big lift, but it is expensive. But I think it's critical to get on top of this issue, that we need that force multiplier.
But, but it's not actually doing extra work in the ice picking itself?
That's correct. So we have all these resources that are involved with the ice picking, additional uh units from OUC and Toho Water Authority, having an incident action plan every day, a weekly report. They're actually brainstorming for different ideas. If this doesn't work this time, how do we do that moving forward? So they're doing other things also.
So that, that, I like that part of it.
Okay.
A, a five hundred thousand dollar team to manage another team just seemed like a lot.
Correct. And so there's other resources. And again, you know, we have our city resources. And so if I have to pull management staff away, there are other things aren't getting done in the city. And factually, I could have put together an incident management team. I have very qualified people, but then something else wouldn't get done in the city. So I am cognizant of the cost, Mr. Trace. Um, and like I said, I, I will keep you fully informed. I hope you saw the first week report. I think they're on top of it and, and that's, that's my request to continue that through this contract and then I'll reevaluate next week.
Okay. And if we can get a presentation at council?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And we do have an ongoing project um for ice picking, which still has available funds, so. Um, the other thing is um, increase the other debt service cost expenditures by seven thousand and decrease contingency expenditures by seven thousand for the aforementioned required arbitrage rebate reporting requirements. Same in the sewer fund, zero increase, but we've increased the other debt service cost expenditures by thirty-five hundred and decreased contingency expenditures by thirty-five hundred for the arbitrage rebate reporting requirements. So the staff recommends approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash one fifty-five R. And we're requesting that city council approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash one fifty-five R. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Any one of the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and questions or motion by council.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one one fifty-five R.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Trace, second by councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Brings us to council action item number one, which has been pulled by the city manager. Item number two?
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one eighty-seven R. A resolution of the city council of the ci- of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a water and wastewater agreement from two fifty-five South Narcusi Land Trust and Commonwealth Trust Services LLC for a commercial development named Nona Church, located in the unincorporated area of Osceola County on the east side of Narcusi Road, west of Moonlight Court, north of Starline Road, and south of Countryside Court, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Good evening. I'm Cameron Crandall, Deputy Director of Environmental Utilities. We're bringing forward this uh water and wastewater agreement for Nona Church. It is a five point three four uh commercial development. It is going to be for a twelve thousand five hundred square foot uh church. It is located uh in unincorporated Osceola County. You can see here on this map, uh, shows the city limits in yellow and the uh Nona Church is in Zion. And we're recommending uh that the water and wastewater capacity are available at this location and um recommending approval of water and wastewater service agreement.
Is the applicant here? Would they like to speak to this item? You state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Brock Alltifer with Osceola Engineering, one zero zero three Florida Avenue. I'm representing the applicant and um, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item in the audience? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
Motion to approve.
And we have a motion for approval by councilmember Askew. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Brings the item number three. Or what'd you say?
Four.
Aye.
Yeah, I think we have worked on, sorry.
Number five.
We're down to item number five.
Discussion and possible action regarding appointments to vacancy on the planning commission.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, the alternate two position is vacant and it is an alt, is an at-large position. Um, and on the bottom, you can see the applicants that we have for this, for this seat and their first choices, first choices, second choices, and third choices. And a person serving on the board um cannot serve simultaneously on the zoning board of adjustment.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Is the term, does the term really expire in six months?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other? Well, I'd like to make a motion for the appointment of Holly Wolfher to the planning commission. Do we have any other nominations?
I'll second that.
We have a second from councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Mr. Mizares?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Surgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing I'd like to um comment on is Mr. Abesme Albreu, who also does improv on Friday nights, as you saw that. But I want to, you know, he's done a great job as our business navigator. He recently has been promoted to our strategic analyst in the city manager's office. And he was going to continue on in that transition till we hire a new business navigator. But he will be working with us on strategic planning and strategic analyst stuff. So.
Good.
Let you know that.
Anything else?
No, sir. That's it.
I saw several people tonight that I haven't seen regularly up here before. It was nice uh seeing a diversity of the staff uh standing before the council. Councilmember Matheny?
I actually have two things, but I'll be quick. Um, one, I just want council to put your thinking caps on. And I know um, councilmember Askew is gonna know what I'm talking about. But just going to our parks and um, the lakefront, and I've been at the basketball court lately, just the amount of litter that's everywhere. I just, I just don't understand it. Like, you're at the basketball courts. I went, I went one day and I picked up several bottles of water and things. I went like a couple of days later and there was, I think, twenty-two bottles of water that were left there. And I know staff, I know staff picks them up, but I just don't understand. Like, what do we need to do? Is there something we need to do, an education program or reach out to the school district and be educating kids? I mean, there's a trash can right there and you're there exercising and people don't throw, you know, just don't throw their trash away. And I know our parks are experiencing that. The lakefront, I get a lot of complaints from folks on the lakefront. Um, just if anybody has any ideas of how to kinda get people to change their way of thinking. I mean, it makes me so sad when I pull into like a parking lot and you see someone has just emptied their whole car's trash.
Yeah, or dirty diaper on the ground.
I don't get it. I don't understand it. But you know, if anybody has any ideas of ways we can help, I feel sorry for like the park staff because they're spending their time picking up trash. I, I don't, I don't have any idea for it. I just didn't know if anybody had.
It's because they didn't grow up with, don't, don't give a hoot, don't pollute.
We made, we made, we made that joke in my gender review and it's single tear running down the face, you know.
I would make a recommendation that we talk to the school to see if the schools could come up with some projects uh for community service. Things just kind of go to another level when you get young people involved and they get passionate about so, something of that nature. And then at the same time, earning community service. So there's got to be some way we could strategically
Yeah.
uh work out a
That's a good idea, like volunteer cleanups.
Call it St. Cloud Beautiful or something like that.
Yeah, I just want to also try to figure out a way to get people to stop doing it, you know? Like, that's why I was thinking, go to the school district and like educate the kids, because kids have a way of like shaming their parents. When they see, I mean, I hate, I, one last thing, I hate when I'm driving down the road and then you see someone roll their window down and just start throwing trash out the, I mean, I just don't understand it. But I'm, if anybody has any brilliant ideas for that, but I love that one about reaching out to the schools. Do you think that's something we could do?
We'll definitely take a, oh, we'll definitely take a look at that. I think that's a great idea, reach out. And, and again, we can do some campaign stuff too. I mean, just be blunt with people, maybe through social media, like this is what we're seeing in our parks. You know, we want to help, help, have us, you know, help us clean it up. I think that's what I'm thinking.
Well, and I mean, I, I don't, I don't want this to happen, but you know, just kind of one thing crossed my mind was I know we have staff available until like eight o'clock at night, like at the basketball courts, for example, and they are cleaning up. Well, so then the trash is happening between eight and ten when the, the basketball courts are still, maybe we say like, if we can't keep this area clean, we're gonna shut, you know, the gates will be locked at eight o'clock or whatever. I mean, I don't want to do that. I just was trying to think of ways to.
Problem is, you end up punishing good people who Right. when you do that, that's who, who weren't responsible. That's, that's a frustration.
I guess, but everybody could help police it too, you know, like.
Right.
Um, and then the other thing is, I had this conversation with the city manager after our last conversation about downtown parking. As I was like driving home, I thought to myself, back at my old Publix days in high school, you know, when I worked at Publix, we weren't allowed to take the parking spaces closest to the store. We had to park in the inconvenient area, as far away from the building as we could and walk in because you leave the parking spaces for the people shopping. So I, I thought about the parking area that the city has, that there's roughly, I just quickly counted, I think there's like twenty-two parking spaces that city vehicles park in. You know, why not move the city vehicles somewhere a little further away and leave that parking available for the, you know, for the people downtown? That's like twenty-two spaces that, you know, that's worth a lot of money. Like, move them over to the fire station, the, the dirt lot for the fire station, or even move them over to the lot that's behind the hotel and leave it. I know the city manager was concerned about the public parking there, but maybe that concern goes away if we make it city-only parking. I mean, county vehicles park in the grass out at Road and Bridge. I mean, it's not an unheard of thing. The other thing is, I've seen four city vehicles and I haven't seen them move. So I don't know if they drive in the day and come back and get to the same spot, like in the parking lot closest to Pennsylvania. So you know, again, these are like pri- you know, that's twenty-nine spaces that we could potentially free up for no cost to the city. Um, and you know, allow that, those spaces available. So I don't know if the city manager has moved forward with it, but I know he always needs three people. So I didn't know if the other council um kind of liked those ideas.
May I speak, Mayor? So we actually met today and kind of looked, and we looked at the code, what we can do and what we can't do. As I, I just told in the email, um, I, I do like the idea of moving the city-owned vehicles across the street. Um, I still think we need to do some improvements to that because it's going to be a muddy mess. So we're looking at either GeoGrid. Um, I didn't realize, I didn't even think about if we put rock down, that's stuff that people can throw. And so we're gonna look at some ways to do that. But it actually already has been improved by DRC to have the grass parking over there. So if you want to add anything about what we talked about as far as the code?
We're still looking at the issue and how you want to address it.
So, I mean, I, I think we can do that.
I think we have a consistent just to continue to try to come up with a plan.
Yeah, I was just thinking, use the assets we have and move the vehicles. I know it's going to be a pain for, and I even thought to myself, move the city vehicles over to the church parking lot.
We, we actually talked about that today too.
You know, I know that's inconvenient for the city employees, but you know, it would just be kind of at the end of the shift, move their vehicles over there. And usually what happens at my job is where the, the work vehicles are parked, the employees park next to it. So that would not only move those vehicles out of the lot, but it would move the employee vehicles out of there too. Because they, the people that go out in their car all day, they come and they park next to their car and then they'll take off. So, um, just as an idea to open up some more parking options. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace.
I'm good.
Councilmember Askew.
I have 12 things I would like to discuss.
Liar.
Can you bang the gavel and then let them just?
Once again today, I had the opportunity of, uh, going to the League of Mayors and the Florida League of Cities Conference up in Orlando, where I should be right now. But, uh, we, they made a check, uh, a check presentation to the city for, uh, a grant that the rec department, our grants department had, uh, put together proposal. And we were, uh, there were four cities that won these, that won a grant out of, uh, over 30-something that applied. And so, I just want to thank our grants department again and the rec department for doing such a good job. And I think these special needs kids that you're going to be, uh, helping will be greatly blessed by that. Thank you for your work. With that, I don't have anything else. Brings us to our information section, report section, Thursday, August the 19th. There will be a city council workshop at 3:00 PM here at City Hall Chambers. Thursday, August the 19th, there'll be a Stevens Plantation DSD meeting at 5:00 PM or immediately following the city council workshop here at City Hall Chambers. There is a correction. The next one is not Thursday, but Wednesday, September the 8th, there'll be a special budget city council meeting. 6:30 PM here at City Hall Council Chambers. Thursday, September the 9th, there will be our next city council meeting at its regular time of 6:30 here at Council Hall Chambers. We have issued some proclamations. Proclamation recognition of International Overdose Awareness Month. We issued a proclamation recognition of Nick Gross and Snow Construction Team, which I would just like to add just an amazing, uh, kudo and thanks to, uh, Snow Construction, taking on that project of restoring that building. I mean, they've just done a marvelous job. And then working with all of the local contractors that donated so much of their time and their work to help, uh, bring that project tuition. Then he turned around all the money he ended up saving, a check for over $200,000. He wrote back to, uh, that, uh, home there that's taking care of these kids. And, um, Snow Construction and Nick Gross are just to be commended for an outstanding job. I'd like to remind you about, there is a warrants list, number 16, a report available. There is a Recreation Advisory Committee meeting minutes for May, which have been approved and are available for review. With that, we have no other items. We will be adjourned.